The introduction is slightly different. Food and drink are allowed. This is a cafeteria-gymnasium combination. Of course, it's allowed outside. No smoking on stool grounds. Apologies to those that that'll be an issue for. We ask that you mute your cellphone. In fact, I haven't done that. I'm gonna do that now to my cellphone. No, we don't cheer or boo any comments. There might be some applause for recognition or thanks given, but no other reason. And then finally, during the vote, actually, this is wrong, and we're gonna spend a couple of minutes on this. In your packet, you all got a little Meridia clicker thing with a bunch of numbers on it. This is what we'll use for voting. After we had sent this to the printer and arranged things, the clerk's office actually went through the -- managed to get through the process with the fire chief to get funding that we could have electronic voters. It'll be very useful outdoors. We're gonna take a test vote now. One A is yes. Two B is no. And if you press any other, including abstain, any other button, it will not -- we won't count that as a vote. There's a little description of how all of this works. When we start voting, you can vote yes, you can change it to no, you can go back to yes, you can click abstain. It won't -- it'll change over time until I end voting. Once we end voting, then your vote is locked in. So if you push the wrong button, it'll show you on the screen which one you pushed. One would be yes, two would be no. And if you push the wrong one, just change it. It'll be -- we'll go 15 to 30 seconds typically for most votes. Make sure that you got the answer that you wanted. So I'm gonna do a first test vote here. So everyone -- the question is, is this your first town meeting? Yes or no? And we'll start voting now. Okay, we have some people still getting things out of bags, so I'm gonna start the 15-second clock now for -- and again, you can play around with changing your vote here. See how it works. And we're done. We've had exactly 150 votes, 34 yeses, and 116 noes. And I'd like to thank all the people that this is your first town meeting. Town meeting is the municipal legislature of the town. When you're here, you're acting as a legislator, not as -- this isn't a public meeting. This is actually a closed legislative session. We also have a packet of slides that I've actually started using. I just did the introduction slide. I'm going to the cast-of-character slides. My name is David Wallerath. I'm the elected town moderator in Stowe. Right now, we don't have a deputy moderator. We're actually gonna do a real vote now. One of my -- one of the things the moderator can do is nominate a deputy moderator, and I'm going to do that now. I'm gonna nominate Laura Spear, who's been deputy moderator for a couple of years. So we'll go to another vote here. So get out your voting card -- your clickers, and we'll start a vote on Laura Spear as And we'll start the 15-second timer now, please. And we're done. We've had 141 votes, 139 yes, and 2 no, so that clearly passes by majority vote. So Laura Spear will be deputy moderator. We also have two assistant moderators. If you have any questions, even if they don't know the answer, they can get my attention if you don't want to flag down Laura or myself. We have Deb Woods, who's sitting in the fourth row here with her arm up inside, and Alice DeLuca outside, will be acting as assistant moderators. And they can answer questions, and if I need a quick break, or Laura needs a quick break outside, we can have them serve as a temporary replacement. Next to me, we have the town clerk. We have also up on the stage Tom Ryan, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. We have actually -- we don't have Erica yet up on the stage, but the Finance Committee will be giving their recommendations from the stage. We have the town administrator down in front, and Capital Planning will be speaking on a number of articles. We also have representatives from the school districts, the planning board, and other boards here. I'm not gonna go through all of those slides like I normally do. The next page. I had published some special rules for this town meeting. The important ones are, if you're indoors or under the tent, we require that you have your mask on. We strongly recommend, if you're anywhere else outside the building but around other people, that you wear a mask. Wearing a mask, I'll remind people, is covering your mouth and your nose. Doesn't help if they're not covered. And if you're setting up chairs outside, please try to set them up 6 to 10 feet from other people, and you're welcome to set up pop-up tent -- pop-up awnings or whatever you want in the field. These clickers, the voting clickers, should work inside the building, inside the auditorium, but also outside, almost out to the outer fence if people need that. I'm not gonna go through all of these rules. The next slide I have is gonna be another vote. We have a number of town officials and school district officials who wish to address the meeting. And I will do two votes, one for this list here that you have in the booklet, a number of town officials and a number of Nishoba officials. And if there's any objections or no objections or comments, we will put this to a vote to allow them to address the meeting. Thank you. And start now. We're -- so yes, if you wish to allow these folks to address the meeting, no if you don't. And we can probably start the 15-second timer. And five seconds. We have 144 votes, 140 yes and 4 no. And so they can address -- there's a -- we had three people that didn't make it onto my slides. Conray Warf, from the Hudson Rep to the Lake Boone Commission; Brad Brightman, the new treasurer-collector; Tina McAndrew, the director of Randall Library; and Bob -- I'm sorry, Bob Girardi, the business manager for Minutemen Regional High School. So I'm gonna take a second vote to allow those four people to address the meeting starting now. And we can start the 15-second timer. And five seconds. And that's 134 to 2, so they will also be allowed to address the meeting. Thank you. Next, I'd like to just mention, town meeting is being recorded for later replay by Stowe TV. And thanks for them. And then I'm gonna turn it over for a minute or two to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Tom Ryan. He had a couple of words.
Good morning, and welcome to the annual 2020 Stow Town Meeting. Sorry, my glasses are fogging up. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and myself, we appreciate you all coming out in these less-than-ideal circumstances. There's been a phenomenal effort made in order to pull this town meeting off today by quite a few people, and I'd like to recognize a number of them for their efforts. If I've missed anyone or any department, I'm sure -- which I'm sure I have, please know that your efforts are appreciated. The town moderator, town clerk's office, the selectmen's office, the Building Department, the Fire Department, Police Department, Stow Board of Health, Highway Department, Nishoba Regional School District, Stowe TV, all of our checkers. The amount of effort that went into this is amazing, and I'd really like to ask for a round of applause for everybody who helped pull this off. One of the other things that I wanted to mention today is, I'm sure you all know that our town administrator, Bill Wrigley, will be retiring at the end of August, and therefore this is his last Stowe Town Meeting. Bill has been our one and only town administrator to date, and has served the town of Stowe faithfully with passion, wisdom, and the best interests of Stowe at heart for the last 28 years. Bill's accomplishments over the years are too many to mention, but a large part of his legacy is leaving the town in an envious financial position for which we should all be thankful. Having worked with Bill in various capacities for over 20 years, I personally will miss his wisdom and common sense approach. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to thank Bill for his 28 years of service to the town and wish him a fulfilling retirement come September. Would you like to say anything, Bill? Keep clapping.
I -- actually, I don't know what I'm gonna be able to say, other than it's been a great And so many people that I've got to know, many as friends now. It's really about memories in life, isn't it? I carry a lot with me, and I appreciate it.
Interestingly enough, as one chapter closes, another opens. Last Wednesday on July 8, 2020, the Board of Selectmen unanimously agreed to execute a contract with Ms. Denise Dombrosky to serve as our new town administrator, starting on September 1, 2020. Denise comes to Stowe with over 25 years of municipal experience, 18 of which has been in administration. We feel that Denise brings a wealth of experience and will be a wonderful addition to our team here in Stowe. We're looking forward to working with her, starting in September. I therefore would like to introduce and welcome Ms. Denise Dombrosky to the town of Stowe. Has I said us too much already, Dave? Back to you.
That's fine. So my next -- my final slide is about debate. Before we do that, there's a couple of minor announcements. If you're inside the building, there is Wi-Fi available. It's Stowe Vote. It does not need a password. If you're outside the building, it doesn't reach out into the field. Oh, when you're voting, the number doesn't stay lit. That was pointed out to me. I typically don't vote, so I didn't notice that on the clicker that I have. The moderator typically doesn't vote unless to break a tie. And then the third notice is, I think I see Laura from REC. If someone from REC could catch me before Article 4, that'd be helpful. I meant to get in touch with you ahead of time. So for debate, we expect respectful debate. This is an adult legislative session, not the U.S. Congress. When you go up to -- we are using microphones like we have in past meetings. There's two inside and two outside. Please line up at 6-foot intervals, and you'll be recognized more or less round robin through them. Try to keep things moving along quickly for the folks outside. It's going to get very hot and humid very quickly this morning. For those not familiar, when you wish to speak, we request, and I can't find mine, that you bring up your pink voting card if we were to have to do a hand vote and show that you're a voter, and introduce yourself, David Wallerath, 30 Samuel Prescott Drive. There's a couple of changes we're doing. One is, I'm reducing the time for people at the microphone to 2 minutes to try to move things along. If you have other questions, we have a town meeting handbook that is available online for those with Internet access. We also have some number of copies, and it answers -- should answer most questions on procedure in town. If you have any questions on policies, procedures, or just something going on, we have the two assistant moderators. You can ask. If you feel that there's a serious problem, get my attention or the deputy moderator's attention, and we can stop proceedings and figure out what the problem is. That's not a big deal. So I think we are ready for a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the warrant and the return of the constable thereon be waived and made part of the record for this meeting, and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter instead of reading the entire article in its entirety.
We have a motion and a second. We provide everyone with a copy of the warrant, so there hopefully is no reason that I have to read each of the articles before we take a motion on it. But is there any debate? Do we have any debate outside? Actually, if Laura, you could respond so that we can hear the outside mics.
No, we do not have any debate outside.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No, we do not have any debate outside.
Okay. So we will begin voting on not reading the warrant? And while we're doing that -- sorry, I was getting a little feedback. A lot of you might notice that there are numbers on your clicker. These were given out in random order, so in theory, we could see which clicker voted how, but practically, your vote will be anonymous. And I forgot to mention, please, please return these at the checkers when you leave. These do cost money. These are loners. We don't want to have to pay for a lot of them. And we're done. 103 to 2, the motion passes. And I'm gonna stop for just a second. I believe we have a -- we're going to have another motion.
All right, go ahead. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the reports of the selectmen and other officers and committees of the town as printed in the 2019 Annual Town Report.
So we have a motion under Article 1. Is there any debate? Is there any debate outside?
There is no debate outside.
Seeing no debate, a vote is a majority vote. All in favor, please vote yes. We can do the 15-second timer. And 5 seconds. 150 to 0, we accept the motion under Article 1. Tom, before you do another one, we have someone, I believe, waiting to make a motion. Laura, could you?
Yes, we do have someone to make a motion.
Hello, Leo Gennarino, if the court can run. Mr. Moderator, I present the case order of consideration of Article 61 regarding the N.R.H.S feasibility study be considered and voted upon now.
So we have a motion to take Article 61 out of order as the next item of business. I believe that was the motion, correct?
Correct, and it was seconded outside.
Do we have a second?
It was seconded outside.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any debate?
Mr. Moderator.
Is there any debate outside?
There's no debate outside about moving the motion.
So we can go directly to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. And all not in favor, vote no. I'm using your clickers. Timer's done. The vote is 144 to 31. That's clearly a majority, so we will take Article 61 as the next item of business at this meeting. Do we have a motion for Article 61?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote -- town approve an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 borrowing authorized by the Nishoba Regional School District for the purpose of paying the costs for a design and feasibility study, for the purpose of building modernization project of the Nishoba Regional High School, 12 Green Road, Bolton, Mass., 01740, including payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. The study for which the district may be eligible for school construction grant from the Mass. School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended at the direction of the Nishoba Regional School Building Committee. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on the needs as determined by the MSBA, and any study costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Provided further, that any grant the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed by the district and the MSBA.
We have a motion and a second. I believe we have a presentation on this from outside, correct, Laura?
Okay, so the way that the motion was written was required by the MSBA, so let me put it into some layman's terms for you. Article 61 requests $1.5 million, but that is split amongst the three towns of Stowe, Bolton, and Lancaster. Bolton and Lancaster have already voted yes. This money will be used to conduct a feasibility study in partnership with the MSBA to identify the most fiscally responsible and educationally appropriate solutions to create a safe, a sound, and a sustainable high school learning environment. Our vote yes will cement our partnership with the MSBA, which is the state agency empowered to reimburse towns for a portion of construction costs. This is similar to what they did for the building we are at today, Center School, whose reimbursement rate was 50.85%. If we vote yes, a project team will begin to form in order to conduct the study, which should take 1 to 2 years. When the study is complete, the towns will then be asked to vote again on how we wish to proceed with this very antiquated building that is really almost past its useful life.
Thank you. We'll take a recommendation from the Finance Committee. Mr. Eckler.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval.
And Capital Planning, I'm sorry, you would have a recommendation. Mr. Jelenek, are you available outside, I believe?
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning did not take a position on this article.
Thank you. Now, is there any debate on the article? If you wish, come up to one of the indoor or outdoor microphones.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry, the selectmen have a recommendation on this article.
We have a recommendation. The Board of Selectmen recommended this article.
Yes, sir, over here. Actually, I should say, we have chairs in front of the microphones. They're boom mics, so they should be able to pick you up from a few feet away.
Okay, thank you. William Byron, 469 Gleesondale Road. I just have a question about the statement under, the last statement on the recommendations. When it says it will be split according to enrollment, I'm sure I'm wrong, but I want an answer. I thought under the Nishoba agreement that capital projects were evenly split. It looks like it may be anyway, but I didn't think that capital funding went by enrollment.
Laura, is there -- can our presenter outside answer that question?
Yes, one minute.
So the -- my understanding is that the way that the money will be distributed is according to enrollment across the three towns. So it won't be a third, a third, a third, but it will be relatively close. And if somebody who's more familiar with the way the school district borrows, perhaps they could speak. Superintendent Clenchey is on site today. is on site today.
Oh, that's who I want to hear from, somebody that knows how capital funding is split amongst the three towns.
Sorry, I didn't quite get that. Was that a question?
Yeah, I didn't get my answer.
Okay, thank you. Bill.
I just want to know, I know maintenance and I sort of thing, I don't, there are some things that go by enrollment, but I thought that capital projects were evenly split between the towns, not based on enrollment. Just a simple question, requires a simple answer in my estimation. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, we don't have a representative outside to address that question.
So we don't have an answer to that. Can the superintendent of the Neshoba School District, Brooke Clenchey, can address that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Leah Viverido was absolutely correct in her response. It basically is a rolling average, a five-year rolling average, sir, I'm not sure where he went, that it's based on, but she's absolutely right. It just about is exactly a third, a third, and a third right now at this point in time.
Side.
There is no other debate outside.
Seeing no further debate, we may go to a vote. This is a majority vote, even though it's borrowing. It's not the town borrowing. So we will start voting. And I think we can start the 15-second timer. So 15 seconds. Five seconds. And we're done. And the vote is 159 to 22, which is clearly a majority, so the motion under Article 61 passes. Mr. Ryan, do we have a motion for Article 2?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the reports of the special committees written in the 2019 annual town report.
We have a motion and a second. Any debate inside or outside?
No debate outside.
Okay, we can go to a vote on Article 2. And voting is open? And we can, I'm sure we can start the 15-second timer here. And five more seconds. And we're closed. 119 votes, 113 to 6, so the motion under Article 2 passes. Article 3, Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 11 of the general bylaws of the Town Personnel Administration by deleting from Section 20H the existing salary schedules A, B, C, D, F, and G, and inserting in place thereof new schedules A, B, C, D, E, F, and G as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee, do we have a recommendation? I don't think your mic is on.
Hello? Okay. One quick question. What article number was that?
This is Article 3.
Article 3, okay. I'm sorry, I thought I heard something different. Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval.
Is there any debate on the motion under Article 3? And any debate outside?
No debate outside.
Okay, we can go to a vote. This will be a majority vote. The voting is open. And I think we can start the timer. Five more seconds. And we had 118, 126 votes, 118 yes and 8 no, so I will declare the motion under Article 3 passes. Before we do Article 4, I believe we have a, will we have a short presentation from the Finance Committee?
We do, and I'm going to make the presentation from here, if it's okay with you. My name is Rich Eckle. I am the former chairman of the Finance Committee now. We elected Erica Benedict to be the chair, so I'm grateful to be able to pass on the responsibility to Erica to deal with this. So if I posted, the budget was changing so much over the last couple of months that the presentation wasn't published with the rest of the articles, but if you go to the Finance Committee page, you will find that there's a slide deck there that discusses this, but it largely just rehashes what I, what we had written in the warrant report. So allow me to pivot to that. Just one minute. Having a slight technical issue, so just give me one second.
So, sorry, do we have a motion under Article, well, Article 4, I'm sorry, we're going to, I'm going to go through the line items in the, in your warrant book and ask if anyone wants to hold it. I'll ask you, if anyone holds it, if you have a question or want to hold it for a, for debate. And debate isn't, that's not a nasty word, it could just mean you want to amend it. And I will ask for a second if someone wants to hold it for debate, which is a slight change over prior years. So, Article 4, line items, I'm going to do them by page to move it along. Line items 1 through 9. Does anyone want to hold any of those?
Yes.
I heard a yes.
Yeah, line, line number 5, that's a different number than what's in the book.
Line item 5, do you want to hold that for debate?
Please.
Do we have a second to hold line item 5 for debate?
We have a second outside.
I'm sorry, was that a second?
We have a second outside.
Okay, we have a, line item 5 will be held. Are there any others? We'll go to page 31 in the warrant. Oh. So there's a, there's been a little debate on stage. Line item 7 is not $500, it is $5,000 in the motion. I've been informed. 50? Oh, 5,500? So an increase of 5,000, so it's $5,500. I'm, I'm sorry. And you can always back up and hold a, hold a previous, or request to hold a previous line item. So page 31, line items 10 through 17. Page 32, line items 19 through 26. Page 33, line items 27 through 33. Line item, page 34, line items 34 through 40.
Hold.
Hold what?
Number 35.
Line item 35. Is there a second to hold line item 35?
There was a second outside.
Okay, we have a request and a second to hold line item 35. Page 35, line items 41 through 47. Page 36, line items 48 through 54. Line, page 37, line items 55 through 60. Page 38, line items 61 through 68. I'm going to hold line item 66 because I know there's a town committee that wishes to hold that, so that will definitely get a request in a second. Page 39, line items 69 through 74. I'm going to not do the schools in that chunk. And then, does anyone wish to hold line item 75? Does anyone wish to hold line item 76?
Line item 76 should be reduced to $1,286,053.
I didn't quite catch that, Laura.
This is Alice.
Oh, Alice, thank you.
Alice DeLuca, 26 Crescent Street. It, that number was voted in December, and the number that we voted in February is $1,286,053.
Oh, thank you. There's a, there's a different number, $1,286,053. Thank you. I was told that previously. The Minuteman assessment is smaller than what you see in the warrant. And again, does anyone want to hold that line item? Then, page 40, line item 77 through 79. So we will take a motion on. The town budget except for line items 5, 7, 35, and 66. Except, we'll take a motion on Article 4, except for line items 5, 7, 35, and 66. Did I miss one?
7 is okay in the budget, I believe, Dave?
I'm sorry, yeah, we'll take 7 out. Sorry, no one wanted that held. 5, 35, and 66 are the only ones we're holding. I used the, sorry, I used the same pen color for marking notes and marking which ones we wanted to hold. Correct, and I would add in corrected, as corrected for line items 7 and 76.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $26,831,88 as recommended by the town selection, town administrator, selectmen for items 1 through 78, with the exception of items 5, 35, and 66, and corrected lines for items 7 and 76 as printed in the warrant under the column, FY '21 budget, town administrator recommends selected. Each item to be considered a separate appropriation for the purposes designated, and the same to be expended only for such purposes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any debate on the budget as a whole except for Articles, line items 5, 35, and 66? Is there any outside?
No debate outside.
Okay, I think we need a recommendation from Finance Committee. Yep?
All right, thank you very much. Once again, my name is Rich Eckle. I'm the soon-to-be former chair of the Finance Committee. I first wanted to recognize our now former town administrator, Bill Wrigley, for his 28 years of service. We're no doubt in much better financial shape than when he started, so I think we can safely characterize the FinCom's opinion that the town is in excellent financial footing from Bill's leadership in crafting and enacting the budget every year. So thank you, Bill. I'd also like to welcome the new town administrator, Denise Dembrowski. I look forward to meeting you soon at a safe distance. And of course, want to thank Erica for taking over as the new chairperson. So in front of me are two of the members. We have Christopher Buck, who is a new member this year, Erica Benedict, who is our now chairperson, as I mentioned, and Atlee Thoransson, I'm sure I butchered that, sorry, Atlee, who's out in the, in the crowd, as well as Peter McManus. It's also, let me take a moment to pause and thank Peter McManus. He's been on this committee for many years, and he is going to be, I think, an associate for us, which would be great, but I'd like to really thank him for his commitment for working with us. I think it's been about 10 years, by the way, for, for Peter. Not quite the 28 Bill had, though. So just as a quick overview, again, this slide deck is available at the Finance website, but if you have your warrant, I'm basically going through the charts that are in the warrant. I wrote in the warrant report this year. So if you follow along, I'll kind of tell you where to go in the warrant as I go. So just to begin, every town in Massachusetts that has over $1 million in property valuation requires a Finance Committee. So Finance Committee is kind of a misnomer. We don't just analyze the budget. We also are advisory, which is why you'll see us making recommendations on things that are non-financial. As I mentioned, we currently have five members, but after today, we will have really three members. I have been elected to the school committee, so I'm staying on as a voting member on the Finance Committee, but really sticking around until we can find people to replace myself and replace Peter. So the Finance Committee is a pretty, is a very critical function. You know, if you're looking at my slide deck, you'll see there's a bulldog facing that. We are the abudsmen for the town. We are the representative of the town as an advisory group. So we really encourage civic, you know, civic engagement here. We need more people volunteering in town, you know, more contested elections. So I highly encourage people to get in there. If you want to know what's going on in town and how your money's been spent, there's no better committee to be on than the Finance Committee because everything comes before us for some sort of consideration. One, one thing to point out, though, we don't have an operational purview, which means we don't really get into like how the money's spent on a day-to-day. We're really just looking at the budget and making sure that it's, it's spent correctly. All right, so let's move on to the FY '20 fiscal overview, which is, which is the prior year that ended on June 30. Where we are today, as many of you may know, is with the fiscal year ending and us extending the, the fiscal year, I guess we didn't extend the fiscal year. What we did is we, is the, the selectmen passed a 1/12 budget, and that was taking a look at 1/12 of last year's budget and then adjusting it accordingly for spending. And this is part of the reason why it's been so difficult to create a presentation is because we haven't, what was sent to us back in, in March and April and May has, has changed somewhat significantly. So I'm going to be giving my analysis So I'm going to be giving my analysis based upon what we had at the time, and I'll let the Town Administrator or the selectmen, you know, correct me, but it should largely be pretty close. So in FY-2020, our tax rate increased 2.38 percent from, to twenty sixteen, I believe it was twenty dollars and eighteen cents before. This is on the heels of an increase of 3.4 percent in the townwide valuation. So the townwide valuation is the sum of all of our taxable assets in town. And so, it's an important measure to look at both, because the townwide valuation, there's two parts to the tax rate. One is the townwide valuation, and the other is the amount we spend. I'll come back to that. But it's important to know that, you know, even though the tax rate only increased by a little over 2 percent, our housing valuation has been growing significantly. So, as of last fiscal year, you know, our town savings were about 10 percent of the budget, which is very healthy. We want to be between 10 and 15 percent to maintain our AAA bond rating, which is another one of Bill's achievements, that we got the AAA bond rating, I think, about five or six years ago. Might have been longer, forgive me. And that allows us to borrow at the best rates possible. Our excess tax levy was about $2 million. So this is the difference between what we can tax ourselves and what we do tax ourselves. So it speaks again to two things. One, that we are able, we do have fiscal restraint. The budget is, you know, I think by most people's estimation, reasonably tight, and it's crazy enough, but we could tax ourselves another 10 or 12 percent if we wanted without having to do a proposition to override, which leads me to the next point, that the proposition two-and-a-half override was not required in FY-20 and hasn't been for many years. All right. So, as I mentioned, the tax rate is twenty-sixty-one, so even though we have this great fiscal restraint, it's still not cheap to live here in town from a tax perspective. If I did my math correctly, we're nineteenth out of 350 towns in terms of tax rate, and last year we were twenty-eighth, so we've jumped up in the rankings. The average single-family value, which is, you know, the median, or excuse me, the average value of a home in Stowe is four hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, and that increased by 2.54 percent. And when you combine those two, you can calculate what's called the average single-family tax bill. So this is taking the tax rate and multiplying it times the average single-family value, and we end up with just over $10,000. So that's a significant benchmark in my mind, because we are now, we've broken that $10,000 barrier, which we've been knocking on for several years, and it also matters because, you know, we no longer can fully deduct our local, state and local taxes off our federal bills. So, this is something that I pay a lot of attention to. So, it increased about $485 from last year, and we are now at twenty-seventh out of 331 towns, so these are the number of towns that have reported at the time. So, you know, we're in the top 10 percent for really all these metrics. Okay, so I'm now on Slide Six. What I showed here, if you're looking at Slide Six, is how our average single-family tax bill has increased over the years in our ranking, and I can just characterize it for you. It kind of goes like this. And the up to the right, right, it's increasing steadily every year from about, sometimes as low as $80, sometimes more, two to $400. And if you look on that, you'll see that we're pretty much, the numbers that are over each one of these bars are the rankings for each year, and we've only been as high as twenty-six out of 350 towns, and sometimes as low as thirty-seven. So this is pretty consistent. We're just, this is how we fund our town. Let's see. Okay, just generally, we've increased on a percentage basis by about 3 to 4 percent for the last 10 years. Depending how you measure it, the average or the median shows similar results. So, I'd like to pause here and just talk about what are we doing here today? Well, what we're really doing is we're reviewing the budget, we're looking at different articles about how we operate, but from a fiscal standpoint, we're really helping to set the tax rate. And the way we set the tax rate is by authoring how much we're going to spend or borrow in fiscal year twenty-one. So, how do we calculate the tax rate? Well, the tax rate is our tax levy, which is what we vote to spend, divided by the townwide valuation, and you multiply that by 1,000. So if you're looking at Slide Seven here, you'll see that our tax levy for twenty twenty was $27,991,000 approximately, and our townwide valuation was 1.3 billion. And when you multiply those together and by 1,000, you end up with $20.61. So I just want to make sure that I, you know, made that clear in people's mind. As I move on to Slide Eight, you know, so that's the townwide valuation, that's the tax rate. So how does this actually affect your tax bill? So your tax bill is calculated slightly different. It's calculated by taking your assessment and multiplying it by that tax rate. And so you can see, when you get a chance to look at the slide, how we calculated the average single-family tax bill. This is actually done by, I believe, the assessor or by the Department of Revenue. By the way, all these numbers come from the Department of Revenue. So, I wanted to just briefly pause and make sure people understand that. One other little nuance about your tax bill that I really didn't understand until the last year or two was, if you'll notice, your Q3 and Q4 taxes are actually estimated, because the FY-21 bill tax rate has not been decided yet. That will be certified sometime in October, November, normally. I don't know what's going to happen this year, but that's why you'll see typically a lower tax bill based on the FY-20 tax rate. And then, in Q1 and Q2, starting in January, you'll get the actual tax bill, which is typically more, but it's all dependent on how we vote on spending. So hopefully that does a little service for the town assessor, because I know she feels a ton of questions on that every year. Why is this going up? You know, I wasn't even completely clear on it. So, let's turn to the budget now. So for FY-21, which again, started on July first, again, we've passed a one-twelfth budget, but that will just be adjusted retroactively when we pass the actual budget for the whole year. So the Town Administrator's goals for this year, and they have been for many years, is to maintain existing staffing levels with no reduction in service levels. The Town Administrator, this year, recommended, and it was approved by the Board of Selectmen, for a 2.5 percent cost of living adjustment, except for scheduled step raises for the different employees. So the other important goal he mentioned is that expenses should be maintained or reduced, if possible, and that no non-special article, and that all non-special articles should be level funded, so no increase. So I'm now on Slide Twelve. So the budget drivers for this municipal budget are as follows. So, overall, the budget is about $32 million. It's decreasing by about 2 percent, although the municipal budget, which is the part that we control the spending on directly in this meeting, is going up about 3 percent. Is that still true, Bill? Okay. So what that means is that the overall budget is about going up about 2 percent, and the spending that we vote on in town is going up about 3 percent. So the municipal budget that we control, that's not structural, meaning not school budget, not debt spending, not debt service, which you've already signed up for, that represents, I believe, about 27 or 28 cents of every dollar. So that means, even though the municipal budget is going up by 3 percent, it's really 3 percent of that smaller portion, if you're following what I'm saying.
I'm going to interrupt here. You need to wrap it up a little. You're well over 10 minutes. Okay?
Okay. So, debt service is decreasing by 22 percent. The school NRSD budget is only going up about 1.3 percent, and the Minuteman Assessment is increasing by greater than 20 percent. I believe it's 50 percent. So, a lot of this you can read online or in my report, so let me just give a quick summary. The budget features a reduction of 2 percent over last year. I'm on Slide Twenty-Six. Debt service is coming down considerably, as is our total debt load. I believe the town savings, which is an important metric, is going to end up around, somewhere around 7 percent, and there's no reason why we would need another proposition two-and-a-half override for the 13th year in a row. So we're in really good fiscal shape. Our revenues are down, but that was expected, because there's not been a lot of new housing growth. There's quite a bit of capital expenses in the pipeline, and just remember, we spent 60 cents of every dollar is spent on the schools, so we need to watch how we borrow and how we spend, but we also need to focus on being responsible in how we spend with the largest budget drivers, which are the schools. So thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm wrapping up.
A question or a comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Toop, Eighty-two Harvard Road. If I really cared about the details of that report, I was particularly irritated by the fact that you're calling about slide numbers, which are not in the warrant. Not possible for us to figure out which one you're talking about. Plus, way over 10 minutes. The summary was fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir, over here.
Yes, Warren Nelson from Boxbury Road. I just have a request. Listen to that gentleman for 15 minutes and heard half of what he said, because the mics aren't high enough. So is there any way to turn the audio up so people that are hard of hearing in here can hear you?
I will ask Stowe TV, is that possible?
Do you also have hearing devices?
If you're hard of hearing, we do have hearing devices that can be used.
If you could, like I said, I missed 50 percent of what he saw. The problem with the mask is most people that are talking don't think they're talking loud enough, but you can't hear through the mask. So I'm just bringing the point up that, audio-wise, you have to talk louder with the mask on. Okay?
I will try to remind people, and let me know if I'm not reminding people enough. So, we have not taken a vote on Article Four minus the held items. Okay, I am going to, there's a math issue that's being resolved. I'm going to, on the moderator's authority, table the vote on all of Article Four, except for the three held line items, five, thirty-five, and sixty-six. And I'm going to go on to deal with those line items first. So line item five, I believe Mr. Arsenal had a... Wanted that held. Could we have that? And I should remind people, while we're waiting for that, if you wish to amend one of these, we do have a forum for amending. The town clerk for the records of the meeting requires amendments to be put in writing, and the moderator agrees with that. So do we have some, do we have? There's some on the back table. I believe the deputy moderator has one that I delivered earlier. Do we have the discussion on line item five, Laura?
Yes. Okay. All right. Line number five, that's not a true number. It's, I was wondering if we could put in a true number there?
I'm going to quickly interrupt. I believe this is David Arsenal from what address?
It is, 12 Hastings Street.
Thank you.
Yes. So I'm requesting that we put a real number in there, instead of this number that's not right.
Pardon? Bill, could you respond? Thank you, sorry.
Dave, what do you, how are you defining a real number? What do you?
Well, there's been a new Town Administrator hired, and I guess her salary isn't what this one is for the budget requested, but we didn't know this on the printing of the warrant. So I was just wondering if we could put the corrected number in there, instead of leaving at the end, throwing it all back to free cash?
Two things. First is, the number that is in the warrant at 147,411 would have been my salary for this year and is my salary for two months. We haven't made an adjustment yet with the new salary we've got. The other part of this is, at the end, when I leave, I'll have some accrued vacation that I won't have expended, that would be coming out of this number. So I don't know the exact amount, so leaving it the way it is now is the appropriate thing to do. So when we know exactly what it is, for my accrued unused vacation, minus my two months at 147, and then her rate in the contract, you need some room to play with here. And it might be a little short. I'm going to try to use this as much vacation as I can, so I don't leave here with a large check, but you don't want to reduce this number right now.
Okay, appreciate it. Well said.
Thank you. Is there any other debate on line item five?
There's no other debate outside.
I'm sorry, Laura, I didn't quite hear that.
There is no other debate outside.
Thank you. Seeing no debate on line item five, we'll go to a vote. I'm going to start the voting period now. And this is only for line item five in the annual budget. And I think we can start the 15-second timer, so 15 seconds. Five seconds. And we're done. Line item five passes 124,26. The next held line item is line item thirty-five. That is the police chief's salary. Do we have a?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Dave Arsenal.
A little louder, please.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Dave Arsenal, 12 Hastings Street. On the number thirty-five, once again, there hasn't been a police chief hired yet, a permanent one, and arbitrarily, a number was put in there, and we're not going to talk about the money left over from the prior chief. But it seems like, I'm not the only one, but... chief. But it seems like, I'm not the only one, but some kind of budget reform, flatlining the overall police department budget from last year until the new chief comes in and lays out a plan. Because I don't know if they have a, well, everything's messed up there, but I don't know about a plan. We have town meeting every six months, so it, I mean, if we, my request would be if we just flatlined the total police department expense, because 35 is not an actual item at this moment. So that's all I got to say. Can somebody respond?
One second.
I'll ask the town administrator to respond, please.
To begin with, the police budget includes, at this moment, structural requirements on the salary side. And simply to say you want to level fund it wouldn't be appropriate. The other thing to understand, you held number 35, which is the police chief's salary line item. That number at 129,000-plus represents what would have been the salary paid to the then-current police chief that is no longer with us. But that number, until you have a new police chief, depending on the chief, 129,000 is going to be a little thin, I think. I would not be reducing that number, given that if the town searches outside the department for a replacement, the going rate's going to perhaps be, to contract with, more than that. So I wouldn't be touching that number right now. And this budget that I'm recommending is only 2.4 percent greater than 2020. And you'd have to dissect this budget to decide where you're going to cut. Once you've excluded where you can't cut, to decide if you're trying to get to level funding or not. And I would argue to you that this budget, the functional relationship between this number and what it's going to take to run that department is pretty close. I would leave it until you have some evidence that reducing it could be sustained. And that would take more analysis and time, perhaps a special town meeting later in the year if there's some reason or cause. I know that there is some efforts to look at all police departments without looking at detail and reducing the amount, either in overtime, which it's typically, and we don't, the detail rates don't affect us because it's paid by the private contractors. So all I would say to you is I think the prudent thing would be to, if you want to consider reducing the police budget because of the ongoing cultural movements, that you take some time and evaluate whether this budget is one, or our police department per se, our actual police department, the services it provides in our community, and whether people are dissatisfied before you decide at this point to undertake that effort. For those reasons, I would leave that number where it is.
Thank you. Is there any further questions or debate on line item 35, the police chief's salary?
No additional debate outside.
Seeing none, I'm going to take a vote on just that line item, Article 4, line item 35. Voting is open. Please use your clickers. And I think we can start the 15-second timer. So 15 seconds. And the final vote is 120,211. So line item 35 passes. And then finally, line item 66. We have a motion to amend, I believe. Sorry, yes, sir.
I had a question on this line item 35 and the police, before you voted on it, to be honest with you. Can I voice my?
Pardon?
My opinion?
I, you can certainly give your opinion or remark. We're still under the budget.
Well, before you voted, I asked to come up and talk. You know, I have nothing against the police, but all the things that have been going on right now, I believe something should be done as far as the salary for the police chief goes, to be honest with you. As far as I'm concerned, I'd increase the budget for the police department by 5 percent if I could. But we do have a systemic problem as far as a police chief goes in this town. I voiced that opinion to the legal counsel. I voiced my opinion to the chairman of the selectmen committee. I had a long conversation with them, and, you know, from what I got out of the conversation is, well, we're going to do the same thing we always do, is find an interim police chief and then promote the police chief to police chief. We've been doing it for the 35 years I've been in the town, and I think we've run into nothing but problems for the 35 years. That's my opinion. So you can approve whatever you want to do. Like I say, I have no problem increasing the police budget, but I do have problems with appointing a police chief, just because he's the next person in line. And six months down the line, the selectmen will not have got a candidate to bring in because they don't think, at least the conversation I had with the chairman of the selectmen, sounds like they're just going to appoint another interim police chief, which they've done for the 35 years that I've been in the town. And I think we run into a problem every time. We've got to get some new blood in there. Again, I don't want to defund. I don't want to cut back on the budget. But I do want somebody in the town to say that they are going outside, and they're going to look for a qualified candidate to take that position. Thank you.
Thank you. I would make one slight correction. Chief Joe Rabello was not hired internally. He came from the town of Munson. And 35 years ago, I don't remember if he was hired or was already police chief, but Chief Mayo was also not an internal hire. So we're on to Article 66. Do we have a motion, or line item 66, I'm sorry. Do we have, we have a motion to amend waiting. Do you have something for line item 66?
I do not, Mr. Moderator. Jim Salvi, 74 West Acton Road, former chair of the Board of Selectmen, if you wanted a response to that last query. If you want a response to that last question. I did speak to Mr. Nelson. Although the board, which includes new members, has not made a formal decision about how we're going to do our search for a new police chief, speaking personally as one member, I would fully expect that we'll be entertaining outside candidates.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, I believe.
Hold on.
Hi, my name is Mike Bush, 25 Peabody Drive. I'm also on the Recreation Commission. I'd like to move to increase line item 66 in Article 4 by the amount of 24,500 for a total of 24,500.
Thank you. So we have a motion to amend line item 66 from 0 to 24,500. Is there a second for that? Do we have a second outside, Laura?
Yes, we have a second outside.
We have a motion in a second to amend line item 66 upwards. Would the rec director like to address why the rec commission is asking for this additional funding?
Thank you, Laura Grino, Recreation Director. As most of you may know, our funding is generated by user fees and programming. We were doing great, and then the virus hit, and we've depleted a large number of funds from our revolving account. Over the years, we've been decreasing our revolving account, I mean, decreasing our appropriated funds, and we were almost to zero, but then this pandemic hit, so we need some help for funding in order to operate and maintain services for the department till the next town meeting.
Thank you. Is there any other, is there any other debate or questions on the motion to amend?
We have debate outside?
Is my mic off? I think my mic is off. It's off. Thank you. Is there any questions or other debate comments on the motion to amend line item 66 upwards?
We have debate outside?
I'm sorry?
We have debate outside.
Could we take it there? We have no one inside.
Ellen Sturgis, 12 Canterbury Road, currently selectman, speaking on my own behalf. I'm wondering, sorry, if we can get a current balance of the revolving fund and accounting of how much has been spent over the last three years?
Oh, we currently have 28,000 in our revolving account, and I would have to do the numbers to look at what we've expanded over the last five, over the last three years. I'm not prepared to answer that question at this time.
Are there any other questions? Bill, do you wish to address the motion to amend? Bill Regley, the town administrator.
Is there a question on the average annual return on the revolving fund? Is that what it was? I was speaking with Tom. That somebody wanted to know, and you just...
My question, sorry.
Last three years.
My question has been, how much has been going in and out of the fund? I have, I mean, Bill just gave me the report the other day. I just think we need to know, given that we don't see the actual expenses of the rec department, what this 20s, whatever, was it 26?
24.
24,000 it was going to go to, given that there's that much in the revolving fund?
So as you know, the only funding we get is my salary. So we have an administrative assistant to pay for her for the rest of, the remainder of the year would be 21,000. We spend 19,000. We'll continue to spend money on field maintenance, which is about 19,000. We're going to have staff at some of our parks, which is another 12,500. And then there's trash and other necessities that go along with running facilities.
Mr. Moderator, we have more debate, please?
Yes.
Allison Campbell, 10 Wildwood Road. I'd like to know if this extra money is going to open the bathrooms at the beach. Currently, there are up to 50 cars there, and there are no bathrooms, and so we're using the lake.
Ayes.
If we do get the funding, we will do everything in our power to get some sort of restroom facilities down there. But people have to remember there are state guidelines that we need to follow, and if we cannot meet those standards, then we cannot have porta-potties and/or restrooms at the facility. The other part of her question was, or her statement was, we have 50 cars there a day, and that could have been true in June, but we've been having an attendant there now in July, and we are number, we are limiting the numbers of cars able to come into the park. We're averaging 17 a day. So I'm not sure where the number 50 comes from, but we're keeping records, and that's about where we're at per day. Thank you.
I was counting them in June.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions on the motion to amend?
There is one more comment.
Seeing none, we will go to...
There is one more comment outside, please.
The number 50 comes from me counting them. Current, the attendants have reduced that, but 17 cars are using the beach, and there are no bathrooms, and there are a lot of children down there who've been...
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble here.
You guys speak up. You guys speak up louder.
There are a lot of children down there.
Use this one.
You don't have so many.
Use this one.
Yeah.
Use this one.
I'm sorry, we have multiple people talking now. Can we?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Have one person at a time, please.
The number 50 comes, I actually lived in the beach, and I counted the cars. Now the 17 is, is Stowe Residence only, I assume. But 17 people take, going to the beach for a day, still have to use the rest, have to use the bathroom. And leaving the bathrooms closed is not a hygienic thing to do. I don't know why you're not stopping people use the beach if you can't open the bathrooms.
Go ahead.
Pine Bluffs isn't just a beach. It's a park. People come there to use it for all different activities, playground, basketball courts, the field, bocce, horseshoes, volleyball, all those things. We've made it clear in the paper and on our website that there are no bathroom facilities, just like there are no bathroom facilities at Memorial Field, Town Center Park, and the other parks that we maintain. So people have to be prepared. They have to know it. They have to prepare and make, if their stay days to be shorter, their stay days to be shorter. But like I had said in the past, if we get funding, we will do everything in our power to try to get some restrooms open.
We have more debate?
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead. We have, no one inside waiting.
Mr. Moderator, this is Mike Kapczynski, 12 Canterbury Road. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for some accounting of what's happened with the revolving fund over the last few years when there is an additional request for funds. And we've had just kind of hand-waving right now, and I just don't understand, there's, if there's a specific request for $24,000, we should know exactly what it's going for and what the money up to now has been spent for, because I see no accounting for this revolving fund, what goes in and out. And everybody's fine with that as long as they're not asking for more money. But now that you're asking for money, you got to ask, you got to fess up and show exactly what's happened with the money that we've spent so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments on the?
Yes, we have more debate?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Copeland from 234 West Acton Road. I just want to say, number one, I support the funding for the rec department. I think they've done a good job so far with limited resources this year and some obviously unusual circumstances. What I would say about the bathrooms, though, which I think is, it's critical that the bathrooms get open. I think the beach is an important part of the town's facilities. A lot of people use it, especially, you know, now during the summer, people are trying to stay cool with more limited places to go. I think a lot of people would be willing to contribute to that happening if we just know what the issues are. So you mentioned that there's requirements and things from the state. Let's, you know, whatever that is, can we just know that and then get them open, right? So I think a lot of people would support the funding for that kind of thing. And so if it's a matter of more funding or whatever, like, let's just get that known and then fund it.
We have no additional debate outside.
Make one more comment?
I'm sorry, yes?
Could I make one more comment?
Yes.
Laura Grino, again, Recreation. So I think it might be helpful to say, you know, give an average of what we expect to bring in from revenue on a typical year. Camp Stowe is our biggest revenue funder, and we typically, after expenses, bring in about $40,000 from Camp Stowe. Then we bring in about another 12... Then, we bring in about another 24,000 from user fees. As you know, all of that has been taken away. The beach runs at a loss without Camp Stowe. It has for many, many years, but we've been able to subsidize that with Camp Stowe as lo, and I don't know if a lot of people know this as well, that the rec, Recreation Department's revolving account funds all the maintenance of the fields, except for a small amount of money that we've had in the past, which was, we were going to give back to the town this year until this pandemic happened. So, we are getting 16,000 from the town's appropriated funds for maintenance. We were going to give that back when me and the town administrator met in December, and then by March, the pandemic hit, and all of our funding for fall and summer programmings went out the window. So, that is basically why we're asking for the funding, and I don't anticipate us coming back every year and asking for this once this pandemic is over.
Thank you. Is there anyone else outside?
No, there's no other debate outside.
So, we will go to a vote on line, on the amendment to line item 66 for $24,500, and I will open voting now. And we can start the 15-second timer. So, 15 seconds. Five seconds. And we're done. 129 votes, 93 yes and 36 no, so line item 66 has been amended. Now, are we ready to complete Article 4?
I talked to Linda, but basically what I'm...
I'll be just a second, sorry.
Mr. Moderator, would you please repeat? We can't hear you outside.
think I'm going to withdraw the prior Article 4 motion and allow the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to give us a new motion for Article 4.
I moved at the town rate, vote to raise and appropriate a total of 28 million, 817,795, as recommended by the town administrator, selectmen, items 1 through 78, inclusive as printed in the warrant under the column, FY budget, town administrator, selectmen, recommended. Each item to be considered a separate appropriation for purposes designated with the following, On page 30, line item 7, the appropriate amount should have been 5,550. We have added $24,500 for line 66, as we just voted. And earlier, there was a change to line item 76, which reduced it by a total of 37, 73. So, it changed it from 1,323,826 to 1,286,083. And God willing, I've done my math correctly, but everything should tie out. I've asked the FinCom to check in, check it for me, but those are actually the only changes. So, that is the new motion.
Did you mention 66 in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
66 went to 24,500. So, the new number that we're moving with all that, those changes, 28 million, 817,795. Did you get the same thing?
We have a motion and a second now for the, the full Article 44, including the amended amount for the, the rec department and a downward amendment for Minuteman vocational and an additional change for the town administrator expenses. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee? Is there any debate on the amended motion, or the modified motion for Article 4? And I apologize for the little bit of confusion. The various officials inside, up on the stage, just wanted to make it clear to everyone what was being voted on and that the numbers all were correct for the official record.
It was, we didn't all hear it. 28 million, 800, what?
Thank you.
It'll take us a second to get that number. The Chair of the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the Finance Committee are conferring to make sure that the numbers are correct.
Pete knows the number.
I don't know. The number's...
They're, they're putting it back into the consent calendar. I thought we already took it out and we put it on it separately, but they're putting it back into the consent calendar, so the only way to vote against it is to vote against it. I don't think that's right. We did put a hold on it. He put a hold on it, and now they're putting it back in the consent calendar. That's not right. We were about to vote it. We were about to vote, yeah, with the... Right. It's fucked up. Once you hold it, you have to vote for it separately. It's not in the consent calendar. We did. He's stupid. Yes. Make the point. Make the point. He's right there. No, I know, he's right there. This is not the way it's supposed to work.
Do I have the Finance Committee check these things for me? We were off $50. So, the new number that we're moving is 28 million, 817,845, 845. 28 million, 817, 845, with the changes that I previously mentioned.
Did everyone hear that? The final number is 28 million, 817,845 under Article 4. Is there any further questions or debate on this article? Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval with the changes.
Is there any other questions or debate?
Yes. Yes, we have debate outside.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Mike Kupchinsky, 12 Canterbury Road. According to the consent calendar procedures in the warrant, it says that if an article is asked to be held for debate, the article is dropped from the consent calendar and restored to its original place in the warrant.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt there. This is not the consent calendar, this is the budget.
Thank you.
Any other debate or questions?
Yes, we have more debate outside.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Peter McManus, Redacre Road. I guess a procedural question of the, the rec budget was just discussed, voted on, but it seems we're opening up the, the budget again. If possible, I'd like to put another hold on, on the rec department budget, because I have further questions.
I didn't quite catch that, but we have not voted on Article 4 yet. We've...
Okay, may I put a hold on the rec department line item, please?
We voted on a motion to amend the rec department's line item to a higher amount. We didn't actually do a final vote on the budget or on that line item.
Okay, if I don't have to put a hold, then I do have a question about the budget.
About what?
About the rec department budget.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, wait a second, we're not going to hold. We're, we're about to go to a vote on Article 4, including the rec department. So, if you have anything to say, you need to say it now.
Thank you. I'm on the Finance Committee, but speaking personally here, a supporter of the rec department. They do a whole lot with, with a little bit of money, largely because of the revolving fund they have with their fees. Just not sure if people are aware that this is one of the only funds like that in the town. Everything else is, is transparent and voted on. And I, I would just, I guess, express my surprise that they had come here planning to move a higher number, but hadn't brought any accounting of the previous numbers. So, I, I still would strongly like to see that. It's, it's been difficult information to get over the years as we've asked for it, and it, it remains that way. Again, I don't think they're doing anything wrong, and they do a good job with it, but it's, everyone else has to come here with, with their numbers. I, I would like to see the numbers. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or debate on the budget?
No other debate outside.
Thank you. Seeing none, we will open Article 4 for voting. Now, you're voting on the, the bottom line item, 28 million, 817,845, as split up or amended, as, as shown in, in your warrant, except for those three amended line items. And we're voting on the big number again. So, voting is, is open. Please use your voting cards. And I think we can do with a 15-second. So, 15 more seconds. And we have 119 votes, 109 yes and 10 no, so the, the budget as amended is passed as a whole. Now, we're ready to move on to the consent calendar. The way the consent calendar works is a lot like the budget, only in the other direction. We are collecting a number of normally non-controversial articles to try to do them as a single vote. We will go through the consent calendar articles, and voters can hold them for, to be dealt with as a individual article if we want. So, do we have a motion, Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the annual town meeting, vote to take actions on Articles 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32. As said, motions are printed in the consent calendar, a copy of which has been provided to voters at this meeting. Without debate on any such articles, provided that upon the request of any voter at this meeting made before the vote is taken on this motion, an article shall be dropped from the consent calendar and shall be acted upon in the ordinary course and order of business at this town meeting.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to now go through the consent calendar and see if any voter wishes to hold any of these articles. It'll work like the, the budget. If you wish to hold it, you don't need to go to a microphone, but you do need to yell "hold" loud enough for myself or the deputy moderator to hear you. Article 5, the reserve fund. Article 6, revolving fund for inspection fees. Article 7, revolving fund for advanced life support. Article 8, SWFWIC 911 notification, that's reverse 911. Article 9, weights and measures. Article 10, transfer to conservation fund. Article 11, transfer from wetlands protection fund. Article 12, addition to conservation fund. Article 13, update to property valuations. Article 14, town record binding and repair. Article 15, highway, road machinery in private ways. Article 16, highway, road construction and authorization for public ways. Article 17, household hazardous waste collection. Article 18, municipal solid waste disposal. Article 19, public health nurse. Article 20, stow cultural council. Article 21, stow TV expenses. Article 22, holiday decorations and lighting fund. Article 23, employee educational incentive program. Article 24, audit of financial records. Article 25, transfer to OPEB trust fund. Article 25 is being held. Article 26, transfer from MWPAT, Harvard Acre Wells, loan receipts. Article 27, water system expenses. Article 28, Board of Selectmen Small Purchase Fund. Article 29, Lake Boone Water Quality Remediation. Article 30, Planning Board Engineering and Consulting Master Plan Expenses. Article 31, Community Preservation Expenses, and Article 32, Community Preservation Reserves. Now, outside, was there any that I missed? I didn't hear any.
There were no holds outside.
So, I have one hold on Article 25. So, the motion that we have will, would be all of the articles, Articles 5 through 32 minus Article 25 for the consent calendar. If there's no further debate, we will open for voting. Please use your cards to vote yes or no on the consent calendar items.
Do you want a recommendation?
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a recommendation from the Finance Committee before we take a vote. The vote is, is currently open, but we'll take a recommendation.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. I'll be as brief as possible. For Article 5, we recommended that for approval. For Article 6, we recommended that for approval. For 7, we recommend...
Are there any that you didn't recommend approval?
Uh, let me look. It's probably an easier way to do it, right? Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends all of the consent calendar for approval.
Thank you. Voting is open. Please vote yes on the motion for consent calendar. And we'll do the 15-second timer. Five more seconds. And we are done. The vote on consent calendar items as amended was 104 to 5, and I will call that as all consent calendar items, except Article 25, as passed. consent calendar items except Article 25 as passed. Now we'll take Article 25.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $235,000 to be added to the OPEB Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund for the purpose of accruing reserve funds to reduce the town's unfunded liability in meeting its financial obligations in providing health care benefits to its retirees.
Do we have a second? And Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval. It does increase expenditures to do so. As most of you know, OPEB is for other pension and employment liabilities. We had traditionally gone as a pay-as-you-go thing, policy rather, that was advocated by the town administrator. He engaged a consultant with the support of the Finance Committee and the Selectmen, and lo and behold, what he was putting away was about, almost exactly, the right number. So this is, it's a little bit more. We do cover our expenses for year to year, but we are also putting away money that will pay down the unfunded liability, which is frankly a more responsible way to run your finances. So I think I can characterize the FinCom's unanimous support for this article as fiscally prudent and smart. Thank you.
So this was held. Do we have a question or debate for holding it? Yes, sir.
William Byron, 469 Gleesondale Road. I apologize for holding up the proceedings here, but I did notice that it was quite a bit more...
A little louder, Bill, if you could.
I did notice that it's quite a bit more than we have been doing. I think my question's partially been answered by the Finance Committee's statements that we've changed the philosophy somewhat apparently on funding this. All right, go ahead, Bill.
Administrator has a, would like to address it also.
Bill, just to be correct about it, this is the same amount that we appropriated for FY '20. Yes?
I'm sorry. I thought it was quite a bit more.
Thank you. So we'll go to a, is there any debate outside on Article 23? Or I'm sorry, 25?
There is no debate outside.
So we can go to a vote. I'm going to open voting now. And I think we can start the 15-second timer. So 15 seconds. Five seconds. We had 92 yes and 7 no, so the motion under Article 25 passes. And we are ready for... Before we take a motion on Article 33, we'll take a... Did you have, well, we'll take a short presentation from the Capital Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Jellin at Capital Planning Committee. I'm prepared to present a very short overview today of the process that we go through leading up to town meeting. You'll find our presentation on...
A little louder if you could, Steve.
You'll find our presentation starting on about page 6 of the packet that you got when you checked in today. As you can see from your warrant, there are 11 capital articles in idle, capital items in Article 33, and in a few minutes, you'll be hearing from members of our committee with our specific recommendations about each. But first, I'd like to acknowledge the work of the members of this committee and to thank them for their efforts. It's always a challenge to assess the capital needs of the various town departments, and this year was particularly interesting from a logistical perspective. Turning to Slide 2, those of you who've been to Capitol or been to town meetings before, are any of the 30 people who are here for their first town meeting still here? Okay, we have one, so I guess I get to explain what the Capital Planning Committee does. We're charged with considering and making recommendations to the town about capital projects. Specifically, we're charged with developing an annual and five-year capital outlay program for the town so that you, the voters, can make informed choices about where you want to spend your money next year and in the next few years. A capital expense is defined in the town bylaws as any land acquisition or an expenditure by the town of $10,000 or more with a useful life of three or more years. The process for us starts in December when the towns submit their department requests. We then meet with each department, review their request and their five-year plan. We also evaluate special purchase articles. And then, in conjunction with the town administrator and the Finance Committee, we look at each town's, the town's overall financial picture, and then we make recommendations to you about each capital request at each town meeting. Turning to the third slide, which presents the summary of the capital requests for this year, FY '21, there's four columns. The first is a comparison, the first, what this slide does is it compares what the departments are asking for this year compared to what they had in their five-year plan last year. We also compare what they're requesting to what they originally asked us for back in December. And you'll notice that many of these department requests are now different than what they projected a year ago. This is not surprising. It is in fact that some of the amounts in the warrants are quite a bit less than what was requested originally. We're also presenting our recommendations on this slide as well, and you might get the impression that this year we're not recommending a whole lot. But if you look at the total line, you'll see that the total amount that we're recommending is more or less in line than what we recommend in a typical year, and we'll have more to say about each item as it's moved. Turning to the next slide, these next two slides will give you some perspective about how these year's requests stack up against what's been approved and what could be requested in the future. The first of this is the summary of our five-year capital outlay program projection. It's based on what the departments have told us that they expect to request in the next five years. Remember from that last slide that these plans likely change from one year to the next, and so you can expect that the requests shown here will likely change over the next few years. I will point out, however, that the average of the requests for the next four years are more or less in line with our historical average. In the next few years, however, we do know that the Highway Department is going to be asking you to fund new vehicle purchases. There's some streetscape improvements planned for Gleesondale. There's new equipment planned for the police and fire departments, and we know that there's a bunch of other large projects on the horizon that this slide, this slide does not... So what we get as far as five-year plans is typically only the department's five-year plans. And lastly, I'll wrap this up with the final slide. It's in black and white in your, in your packet, but it's in color if I were able to present this. The first five bars on this are the, what we've approved over the course of the last five years. The next year, FY '21 is what's in your warrant today. And then the other bars to the right of that are the projections for the next four years. Again, this year's number is a little bit more than our typical average. Our typical average is around $550,000. Obviously, the amount that we were approved last year, $4.5 million, was unprecedented, and I in fact had to change the scale on this chart to actually make it fit on the slide. Anyway, wrapping this up, Mr. Moderator, we expect that in the next few years, our capital expenditures will be more in line with what we regularly expect to see, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Are we ready for a motion, procedural motion on Article 33? It's not on.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town discuss the items of this article individually and vote upon each separately as the amount to be appropriated for each item as set forth in separate motions proposed.
Do we have a second?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to split Article 33 and treat each item as a separate line item. Is there any debate? Anything outside? Hearing none, I think we can go to a vote. Let's open voting on... Oh, pardon?
Oh, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We can, why don't we... So we're voting on, voting is open. Please use your, your cards. We can do the 15-second timer.
Okay, he got it.
And just about done, and we're done. That passed 63 to 10, so we'll now go on to 63 dash 1. Or 33, I'm sorry, dash 1.
Mr. Moderator, I, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to upgrade the existing town building doors to meet ADA compliance.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, not this one, this one?
Mr. Moderator, it is our understanding from Capital Planning that this motion was to be no action?
So I had a question for the article sponsor. I thought this was going to be no action. Was that correct, or was I mistaken? We have the building inspector, Bill. We have the building department here. Before I accept that motion...
Yes, my recommendation is to vote no action on Item 1.
So are you willing to change that motion to no action on Line Item 1?
Mr. Moderator, I am happy to change my action to, my motion to no action.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second for no action on Line Item 1?
Second?
We have a, we have a motion for no action on Line Item 1 on the floor. Does the building department wish to speak on no action?
We do, sir.
A little, little louder if you have anything to say.
I'd like to vote, I'd like to move no action on Item 1.
Okay, so is there any questions or debate on no action on Line Item 1?
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning recommends no action on Item 33-1.
Thank you for reminding me. And Finance Committee, do we have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends no action as well.
So we have recommendations for no action. Any, any further debate? Seeing none, we'll open for voting on 33-1, no action on town building doors. And we can start the 15-second timer, I think. So 15, 15 seconds. Five seconds. And we have a vote of 72 to 15 for no action. That clearly passes. We will take no action on Line Item 1. Line Item 2?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $80,000 to upgrade the roof and HVAC system at the Randall Library.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Do we have a recommendation from Capital Planning?
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning recommends the town support the building commissioner's request for funds to repair one of the Randall Library's HVAC systems and to repair a leaking section of the roof over the 1975 edition of the building. Capital Planning recognizes that the library is and will remain an important part of the town's physical, cultural, and social identity. While planning is underway for replacement of the 1975 edition, we believe it may be several years before this project is undertaken. And in the interim, we view the expenditure for these repairs as a prudent use of funds to ensure the comfort of the library's patron and staffs and to prevent further damage to the library building and to its collection.
Finance Committee, do we have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval. It, if approved, it will increase expenditures.
Thank you. Do we... I believe we have a short presentation from the building inspector on this.
We do.
If you could speak up, they're having trouble hearing, hearing it outside.
Okay, we'll try this. Is that better?
Try the other mic.
Yes, that, that does sound better.
So I did want to point out that the way this article was written, that we were, I was proposing to transfer unexpended funds from several other capital projects to help defray the cost, the total cost of this project, to the sum of $30,000. That would be combined with the $80,000. The total would be $110,000 for this project. Was, am I, would you like me to read that, or is someone going to read that actual proposal to transfer those available funds?
To use...
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I was busy writing something.
What was your question?
So the way I wrote this, the way I wrote this article for the library was to propose to transfer funds from three other capital projects where I had excess funds to help defray the total cost.
Well, we have...
And that totals $30,000 from three other articles, to be combined with the $80,000 for $110,000 total.
So you're saying the motion is incorrect?
I'm asking for advice on how you would like to proceed with this.
So we'll, why don't we set this aside? You're going to need to... Why don't, why don't we, I, I will ask for a motion to table this discussion so that they can work out, there appears to be a wording problem with the motion.
So moved.
So Selectmen Courtney made a motion to table this discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table the discussion. Let's put it to a vote. Voting is now open. All in favor of setting this aside till we can figure out what it is and moving on to other business, please vote yes. If you want to continue, vote no. Continue with the current discussion. We'll do the timer, yeah. And five seconds. So 85 to 9. We are tabling the discussion on this, on, on 33-2, and we will move on to 33-3.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve and transfer... Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve and transfer... appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $243,000 for the purpose of purchasing a new six-wheel dump truck for the Stowe Highway Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 33-3. I don't think we have a presentation on this. Is there any questions or other debate?
We have a recommendation from Capitol.
Thank you. We'll take it from outside. There's no one inside.
Capitol Planning voted to support this article. It's a much-needed number-one truck that the other ones are starting to show their age. So, that's why we... When he came and presented all the stuff, what the truck can do, because it's a thing, it was a... Oh, jeez. We approved it.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Recommends approval of this article.
Is there any other debate on 33-3? A six-wheel dump truck?
No debate outside.
We can go to a vote. Let's open voting. Thank you. Voting is open. And let's start the timer. So, 15 more seconds. Four seconds. And we're ready. 82 in favor, 13 against. The motion under Article... Under Line Item... Or Item 3 of Article 33 passes. 33-4, October Lane resurfacing.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $26,800 for the purpose of resurfacing October Lane.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any... Capitol Planning, do we have a recommendation?
Capitol Planning voted not to support this project. We feel that it can wait. So, we did not support this article.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of this article.
Is there any other debate or questions on Article 33-4?
No debate outside.
Seeing none, we will open voting now. And we'll start the 15-second timer. And that is 10 yes and 82 no, which means the motion under Article 33-4 fails. Article 33-5, Hudson Road culvert replacement.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $110,000 for the replacement of a culvert on Hudson Road.
Second.
We have a second.
Second.
I'm not hearing a second.
It was seconded outside.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Capitol Planning?
Capitol Planning voted to support this article. It's... There's a sinkhole that's starting to develop in the road, which is a...
It is. A little louder, if you could, please.
All right. Capitol Planning voted to support this article. It's much needed. There's a sinkhole developing, and it's... It could lead into a dangerous situation. So, we... Capitol Plan approved this article.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Is there any other questions or debate on a Hudson Road culvert replacement? Hearing none, we will open voting now. Sorry. And 91 yes for no, the motion passes. Article 33-6.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 33-6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for no action. Capitol Planning?
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning is in favor of no action on 33-6.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is happy with no action on 33-6.
Is there any other debate or questions? Hearing none, we'll open voting now. And we can probably start the... And at 74 yes and 13 no, no action on 33-6 passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 33-7.
Second.
33-7, we have a motion for no action. Capitol Planning?
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning is in favor of no action on 33-7.
Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee concurs with the Capitol Planning Committee.
And is there any debate on no action?
No debate outside.
Thank you. Hearing none, we will open voting now. And we can probably start the timer. And at 76 to 12, no action passes. Article 33-8.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $26,000 for the replacement of the HVAC compressor at Hale Middle School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Capitol Planning?
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning voted to support this article, four in favor, one opposed. We recommend the approval of the article. The HVAC... New compressors are required because of a faulty installation of the original equipment, resulting in an early failure of that system. Several other compressors have failed, and with this final set of repairs, the system should work as intended.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Passage of this article does increase expenditures.
Is there any other debate on 33-8?
No debate outside.
Then we will open voting now. We're probably good to... So, 15 more seconds. And at 94 yes and 5 no, 33-8 pass. 33-9.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $82,250 for the purpose of reconfiguring classroom space to office space at Hale Middle School.
Second.
Capitol Planning?
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning voted not...
A little louder, please.
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning voted not to support this article. While we recognize the value of the proposed work to improve the functional use of Hale School, we feel that the impact of delaying the project for a year during the current pandemic is reduced, and the cost savings are significant during this difficult year. We recommend that the article not be supported.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee does not recommend approval of this article. We concur with the rationale that the Capitol Planning has put forth, and if this was to pass, it would increase the expenditures.
Thank you. Is there any questions or other debate on this?
No debate outside.
We have one inside.
My name is Kyle Grady. I'm here as a non-voting guest. It's my honor and privilege to serve as the...
A little louder, if you could, please.
It is my honor and privilege to serve as the principal at the Hale Middle School. I have a few items that I'd like to address here. Our enrollment for the 2020-21 school year will be the highest in the whole school's history, with over 100 students in each of the three grades. We are currently utilizing all possible spaces within the building. To give you an example, our assistant principal is currently working out of a storage closet. Our enrollment numbers has increased in all of our areas, including our special education numbers, our English language learner numbers, and our students who need guidance services. We are in dire need of teaching spaces as well as spaces to provide special education, ELL, and guidance support. The way that this request is written, I think, is a little bit misleading. We are not requesting that a teaching space be turned into offices. On the first floor, we have a large vacant area that has been used in the past as a culinary arch room, an extended dayroom, and a place for dead storage. We need to transform this space into a multipurpose area. It'll serve two purposes. One, it'll be a place for small group instruction. Two, it's a place where we can provide individualized special education, guidance, and ELL services. As we reopen after the COVID-19 closure and face strict social distancing guidelines, our teaching spaces have become incredibly restricted. Furthermore, the students who would be utilizing this space will be returning to school with even greater needs and more exacerbated problems. We anticipate more students having more complex needs. I implore you to reconsider this building build-out. The space is needed now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or debate? Yes, over here. We have a person inside.
Sarah Sloan, Dunster Drive. I'd like to speak in support of this despite the negative recommendation from the Capitol Committee. As a parent of a student who does receive special education services, it is going to be really important next year that that is prioritized and that... And I have full trust in the administration of Hale Middle School and knowing what they need and recommending what is in the best interests of our children. Thank you. Please support this.
Thank you. Are there any... Anyone outside who wishes to speak?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we do have outside debate.
Ellen Sturgis, 12 Canterbury Road. I just have a question for the principal. It sounded like you were arguing for more classroom space because of the social distancing requirements, not less. So, can you clarify how you're going to take the highest population with less... I mean, not to... I know that we haven't taken advantage of those basement classrooms in the past, but I... Seems like it's a perfect time to utilize them as classrooms, not as office.
Go ahead.
Yes, you're correct. That's why I think that the way it was written was a bit misleading. It is currently dead storage. It's an area that's not used, and we would be transforming it into two offices and a teaching space. So, it will be a dual purpose. The offices are really... It's not... It's for a place for special educators and guidance to offer individualized support for students. And then there's a larger teaching area where we would conduct guidance classes, ELL classes. So, it's a dual purpose, classroom and offices. Thank you.
We have more debate, Mr. Moderator?
Just a... Jackie Spitero, 586 Great Road. Just a quick question. How quickly would you be able to do the work? And would that include... I think you've already answered it in Ellen's question, but would that include open spaces that would meet requirements currently by DUCI?
Yeah, I think we have Nishoba Facilities here.
Rob Freeswick, Director of Facilities for Nishoba Regional. The likelihood of this getting done this summer is unlikely due to procurement laws that we have to follow. We also have to do a bit of engineering to go along with that. So, with the timeline and dealing with trying to, you know, get the students back in the building, it's going to have to take place during the school year and over breaks, you know, hopefully in hopes of getting it done, you know, as soon as possible.
We have more debate?
Thank you.
Ed DeLuca, 26 Crescent Street, on the Capitol Planning Committee. There's a bit of a process issue that I want to raise. When this was presented to Capitol Planning after the pandemic outbreak, we had asked the school district to prioritize their capital list. This item was on the bottom of the list, and the discussions that were presented from the school committee to the Capitol Planning Committee did not reflect the current discussions that are being presented to town meeting.
Thank you. Any other debate or questions?
There is no additional debate outside.
So, we can go to a vote on 33-9, a reconfiguration to classroom and office space. Well, voting is open? And we can... 15 more seconds. And we're done. And the final is 61 yes and 40 no. This required a majority vote, so it passes the motion for Article 33-9. Article 33-10.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of replacing an exterior door at Hale Middle School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Capitol Planning?
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning voted to support this article. The exterior doors are in poor shape and in need of repair. We note that Nishoba Regional District has plans... Excuse me. To... I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong page. Plans for repairing the interior doors as well, and we will expect to see... We expect to see a capital request related to those at a future town meeting. So, we support the article for the exterior Hale School door replacement.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval. Passage of this article does increase expenditures.
Thank you. Is there any other... Any questions or debate on 33-10?
No debate outside.
Seeing none, we will start voting. Voting is open. And we can probably... And 15 more seconds. Five seconds. And we're done. And it passes 90 to 11, the motion under Article 33-10. 33-11.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $39,585 to be expended for the repair of a water tank at Hale Middle School, retroactive to fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Capitol Planning, please.
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning voted to...
A little louder, please.
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning voted to support this article. The work on the repairs was done on an emergency basis. This article provides the appropriate funding source for the completed work.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval for this article. We believe in paying our bills, and since this is retroactive to FY '20, we recommend this for approval. And also note that passage of this article in... And also note that passage of this article increases expenditures.
A little louder, please.
Should I start over? We recommend this article. It'll increase expenditures if you approve it.
Thank you. Is there any debate or questions on 33-11?
No debate outside.
I think we can start voting? And 15 seconds. And we're done. 91 to 2, the article passes. I'm going to ask the folks behind me, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Moderator, it's my understanding that one of the selectmen who will present the motion is outside. Mr. Moderator.
I'm going to take, on my own authority, because I, there's no other capital requests to do, the 33-2, the library roof and HVAC repairs off the table and put it back into debate. I'm going to actually, as moderator, do something else. I'm going to reject the previous motion because there'll be a new motion that's a little bit different. It involves, while they're, while they're discussing the original funding that, that was originally mentioned, plus transferring some additional funds from other sources that already exist. And I've accepted that as a legitimate motion under the article. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I'm reading from a marked-up copy. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $80,000 and to appropriate and transfer remaining funds from annual town meeting, let's see, May 7, 2018, capital request, Article 32-1-
A little louder, please.
For the, for the town building HVAC design, the sum of $5,000. And from annual town meeting, May 14, 2019, capital request, Article 33-3, old fire station-
You mute a little louder.
Heating system replacement, the sum of $15,000. And appropriate and transfer from remaining funds from special town meeting, November 18, 2019, capital request, Article 2, former fire station water service replacement, the sum of $10,000, to be combined for a total of $110,000 for the purposes of replacing the flat roof and the second-floor rooftop HVAC unit.
Second?
So I, correct me if I'm wrong, that's $80,000, raise and appropriate with new taxes, and $30,000 from various funds to transfer existing, from existing accounts, for a total of $110,000?
That is correct.
Thank you. Capitol Planning.
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning remains in support of this project regardless of how it is funded.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Company, Finance Committee concurs with the Capitol Planning, and we approve this article, but do remind voters that this does increase expenditures.
Thank you. And voting is open. I'm sorry, is there any other debate on this, on the motion under this article?
Yes, we have a debate outside.
All right, voting is, is open.
No, we have debate outside.
Oh, there is debate. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is Sharon Brownfield from 154 Taylor Road. I just have a question. I was wondering if they are considering replacing the HVAC, if they considered using a heat pump.
Can the building inspector answer that?
So the rooftop unit that's on the flat roof at the library both provides heat and AC for the second floor of the library.
Did that answer the question?
No, there's a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
The question was not what it would do, but if you considered using a heat pump instead of the HVAC.
We did look at the heat pump approach. It was about $20,000 more to do that, and with the uncertainty of what may happen at the library for renovation of the entire library or a new building, we did not feel that we would want to spend an additional $20,000. So we priced it the way it's presented.
Any other questions or comments on the motion under 33-2?
No other debate outside.
Thank you. We will open for voting now. And 15 seconds. Five seconds. And we're, voting is done. The final vote is 86 to 10, and the motion passes. We are now up to Article 34.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to any balance remaining from any previous appropriation for the purpose of funding the town's general legal account. Second?
We're hearing a, a motion in a, we have a motion in a second. Capitol Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Note that this expense has declined by 60% this year over last fiscal year, and passage of this article does increase expenditures.
So Finance Committee recommends approval. Any other debate outside?
No other debate outside.
Will open voting then? Voting is open. And 15 seconds. Five seconds. And voting is done. At a vote of 81 to 8, the motion passes Article 35.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 in order to fund the cost of purchasing a 16-foot, factory-made trailer to be expended under the direction of the Cemetery Committee. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The cemetery manager's trailer is broken, and he needs it to perform his duties. Passage of this article does increase expenditures.
Thank you. Is there any other debate or questions?
No debate outside.
35. And we will open for voting now. And we'll start the 15-second timer. Five seconds. And we're done. By a vote of 85 to 7, the motion passes. Article 36.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be added to any balance remaining and previously appropriated for construction and maintenance of water holes and cisterns, to be expended under the direction of the fire chief for the purpose of constructing and maintaining water holes, cisterns, and hydrants to support firefighting operations. Second?
We have a motion. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Thanks, chief. Passage of the article increases expenditures.
Is there any debate or questions on Article 36?
No debate outside.
Then we will open voting? And 15 seconds. And five seconds. And we are done. By a vote of 89 to 1, the motion passes. Article 37.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 to be expended by the Stowe Municipal Affording Housing Trust, or the Planning Board, for the purpose of contracting with the Town of Hudson for the purposes of procuring affordable housing-related services regionally, including but not limited to monitoring services for the benefit of Stowe residents. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. For the last eight years, SMT has, on behalf of the town, contracted with the Town of Hudson to monitor existing housing stock and to ensure that none of it falls into foreclosure before SMART can consider purchasing it for affordable housing. The funds also help with legal work, and we, a similar amount of money was requested two years ago and approved by the voters. We remind the voters that passage of this article increases expenditures.
And one moment? I think, is there any debate or questions?
No debate outside.
Then we can open voting. I see none inside. And 15 seconds. Five seconds. And we're done. By a vote of 83 to 9, the vote, the, the motion passes. And Article 38.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $29,800 to be added to any remaining balance, to be expended by the Veterans Service Officer to provide services to Stowe veterans. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Passage of this article increases expenditures.
Do we have any questions or debate outside?
No debate outside.
Thank you. Then we'll go, start, open voting? And 15 seconds. Five seconds. And by a vote of 80 to 7, the motion passes. Article 39.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,475 for the purpose of paying the fiscal year 2021 Norfolk County Agricultural High School Assessment and Transportation for the attendance of one Stowe student for one year. Second?
Motion, we have a motion on the floor. Finance Committee. Article 39.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. This article funds the cost to send one Stowe student to the Norfolk County Agricultural High School in FY '21. By comparison, it's, it is approximately $40,000 to send one student to Minuteman, and although no price, precise number is known, it is an educated guesstimate that it costs to send a student around $23,000. Passage of this article increases expenditures.
Thank you. Is there any debate outside?
Yes, there is.
Okay, we're ready?
Dave Arsenal, 12 Hastings Street. We, this has been on the, on for a few years now. We've asked for a more precise amount. I mean, is this, is, huh? All right, yep. And we're wondering if, if anybody did give us a, a number, and does he have it?
Mr. Wrigley, could you address that?
Actually, this total is accurate, and it is composed of two separate numbers, as the motion reads. One is the tuition to attend Norfolk. The other is the transportation cost required to get the student to and from. And this total is the combination of the quote of those two numbers.
Can he, can, can he drive there yet?
That, that question's been asked-
I know it has.
-to the degree that we have to, it's the honor system, that the school district and the parents, when the discussion is made, and this student, in this case, I believe, is not of age to drive. We've had several other students, this is the first one we've had go to Norfolk. The others were going to Marlboro, to the tech school, is it Assabett?
Yep, yeah, it is Assabett.
This, this student is going to Norfolk. It's the first time. I believe he's only a ninth grader, so I'm not going to encourage him to drive at this time, but-
Fair enough.
There is no other debate outside.
I'm sorry, that was-
There is no other debate outside.
So we'll open, we'll open for voting on Article 39. And 15 seconds. Five seconds. And the final vote is 64 to 29. Requires a majority vote, and the motion passes. Article 40.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,300 to be expended under the direction of OARS, Inc., for the purpose of control of invasive water chestnut plants in the Assabett River in Stowe. Second?
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. This article funds the river cleanup expenses and possibly a small stipend for a volunteer to coordinate and organize the volunteers. We appropriated a similar amount in the previous fiscal year, and passage of this article will increase expenditures.
Is there any debate out, any debate outside?
Yes.
Alan Fierce, 284 Redacre Road. I happen to be the Chair of the Board of Directors at Oars. Of course, I'm supporting this article. I just wanted to point out that in the consent calendar, the town has already approved $12,000 for Lake Boone weed control. This is an item. $2,300 for the Assabett. I don't know if any of you, many people have been out paddling on the Assabett due to the pandemic and finding it to be quite delightful. I would encourage you all to do it. But we need to continue every year our water chestnut control efforts out there, or there will be backsliding, and we won't have the kind of river that we can enjoy going forward.
Is there any further debate?
There is no other- There is no other debate outside.
Thank you. We will open for voting on Article 40. And, we already have 15 seconds going? 5 seconds? And done. And it passes 89 to 2. Article 41.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the Stowe General Bylaws, Article 1, Section 2, to read in its entirety as written in the 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further that non, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the general bylaw.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded outside.
So I just wanted to, I propose this article.
Mr. Moderator, do you have recommendations first?
Oh, recommendations?
I'm going to do the presentation before the recommendations.
So I proposed this article because we currently use the center school for the annual town election, and we use the music rooms, and they're very small, and of course, now with the pandemic and we have to have social distancing, we wouldn't fit there. So I'm proposing Saturday. It doesn't affect the school. I think the turnout will be well-attended. Regular Tuesday meetings, Tuesday elections for the past eight years have been anywhere from 390 to 946 to turn out on a Tuesday, and that was because of a special state primary that was the same day. So we really have a small turnout. And so Saturday, we can use the gym and the cafeteria, and we can be set up, and we can spread out for our social distancing, because I think we're going to do that from now on. And on this past Saturday, when we had our annual election, we had 1,272 ballots processed, and we used the stage and a good portion of this cafeteria area to get our, the ballots processed into the ballot tabulator, because we have to process them as if you were here voting in person. So anyway, I hope you will support this. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Could we take a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval.
Is there any debate on the mo...
Mr. Moderator, I understand the Board of Selectmen has a recommendation as well.
Oh, the Selectmen have, have a recommendation, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommends support of this article.
Thank you. Is there any other, any debate or questions on Article 41?
There is no other debate outside.
Then we will open voting. And 15 seconds. 5 seconds. And the motion passes 85 to 5. Article 42.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the general bylaw by amending Article 6, Police Regulations, Section 21, Voting Regulations at Lake Boone, to read in its entirety as written in the 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the general bylaw.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a short presentation before we take any recommendations.
Thank you very much. Hi, this is Chris Crablein. I am the current Commissioner of the Lake Boone Commission, and I just wanted to explain why we're doing this. So we have rules, voting rules on the lake, which have been codified into the actual police bylaws, and they are no longer in compliance with the state regulations that have come into play. So we are eliminating rules from our, from our bylaws in order to allow the state rules to be governing, or they have always been the governing, and eliminates confusion. So this is not an arbitrary thing. We're not introducing new laws or rules, simply eliminating conflict with state regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on these bylaw changes?
Nothing outside.
Actually, we'll take a recommendation from the Finance Committee on Article 42.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee held our meeting this morning, and we unanimously approved this article for, recommended this article for approval.
Thank you. Now is there any debate or questions?
There still is no debate outside.
Thank you. We will open for voting. To approve or disapprove the amended regulations. And we have a 15-second countdown. And the motion passes 84 to 3. Article 43, to amend the zoning bylaws to allow outdoor dining through a special permit.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 3.3.2.4, Business District Uses, Section 3.10, Table of Principal Uses, and Section 7.3.3.5, Schedule of Minimum Parking, as written in the 2020 Annual Meeting, Town Meeting Warrant, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I actually don't have a note on it. Did the Planning Department or Planning Board have anything to say on the article?
The Planning Department has no comment.
We'll take a recommendation from the Finance Committee now.
Mr. Moderator, we met this morning, and the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. We don't know if this is going to affect expenditures.
Thank you. Is there any, any further questions or debate?
Yes, there's debate outside.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Yes.
Yes, okay. We're ready.
67 Old, can you hear me? 67 Old Bolton Road, Stowe, member of the Planning Board. The Planning Board supports this article. About a year ago, there was some interest in a restaurant who wanted to move into Papagino's, and, but in order to do that, they wanted outdoor dining, and we didn't have a bylaw that would allow that. So we lost that opportunity. Now, in this situation we find ourselves, outdoor dining is even more critical than it was back a year ago when we first formulated this article. So we strongly support it, both in terms of the current situation and going forward to encourage some restaurant, hopefully, that will eventually move into Papagino's.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, we have more debate. Hi, Lori Clark, 39, Bradley Lane, also with the Planning Board. Just a clarification, this does not affect expenditures.
I didn't quite catch that.
This does not affect expenditures, will not cost you any money.
Is there any further debate?
There is no further discussion outside.
Thank you. We can open for voting. And we have 12 seconds less, left. And this will require a 2/3 vote. 5 seconds left. And by a vote of 85 to 2, I will declare this, obviously, in excess of 2/3, and the zoning change passes. Article 44.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 44, Box Mill Bridge, Article 97 Petition, as written in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't think we have a presentation. I will take a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Mr. Mo, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee met this morning, and we made a recommendation to approve, or we recommend that this article is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Selectmen had a recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Select, the Selectmen voted to support this article.
Thank you. And Ms. Sfera, Mrs. Sfera.
Kathy Sfera, 74, West Acton Road, and Stowe Conservation Coordinator. I just have a brief explanation. This article is another step in the process to allow for the reconstruction of the Box Mill Bridge. There is an unstapled handout in the pack out, in the packet, which includes some maps that help understand the article. As background, you may remember that in 2018, the town and Stowe Conservation Trust purchased a conservation restriction on about 80 acres of land at Carver Hill Orchard. At the time, we knew the Box Mill Bridge would need to be reconstructed, and we planned for that in the language of the conservation restriction, but what we didn't anticipate is that some small slivers of land and easements would be needed for the bridge abutments for utilities, drainage, and a temporary bridge to provide access to Carver Hill. So we are now required by the state, who is funding 100% of the bridge construction, to remove these small areas from the conservation restriction. The process for doing this is governed by Article 97 of the state constitution and requires the town to petition the legislature to do that. We are also required by the state to provide replacement land of equal or greater conservation value. So the 75% design plans are underway, and we don't have them yet, but we do have the 25% plans, and a section of these showing the areas proposed to be removed from the conservation restriction in blue is on the back of the handout. There's a total of about 11,500 square feet, or .26 acres of the original 80 acres. We're asking you to vote to authorize a maximum of 20,000 square feet to be removed from the CR in the event that the plans change in a manner that increases the affected area, but we're actually hoping that it will go in the other direction. The land will be replaced by an acre of land at the intersection of Hudson Road and Walcott Street. This is unbuildable tax title land that has been owned by the town for at least 35 years, but is otherwise unprotected. It is Lot 66 on the top right corner of the back of the handout, and sits behind Sandy Brook Drive with frontage on Sandy Brook. The Conservation Commission has voted to support this article, and we urge your approval today. And Mr. Moderator, I believe this is also 2/3 vote.
Thank you. Is there any questions or other debate?
No, no debate outside.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
There is no debate out side.
Thank you. I see, seeing none inside, we will open voting. This will require, again, a 2/3 vote, because it's a change to Massachusetts Constitution, Article 97, Conservation Restriction, which requires a heightened requirement. So about 15 seconds left. 5 seconds, actually 2 seconds. And by a vote of 87 to 1, this, this has passed. Article, I should say, the motion under Article 44 has passed. Article 45.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to reappropriate the balance of $27,295.74 from prior annual town meeting appropriations as follows. 2015 Annual Town Meeting, Article 43, Transfer Funds to Construct Cemetery Roadway and Improvements, the sum of $8,284.49. 2019 Annual Town Meeting, Article 33-4, Capital Requests Cemetery Department Landscaping Improvement Projects, the sum of $19,011.25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Is there any questions or debate?
No debate outside.
Thank you. Then I believe we can open for voting. And 5 seconds. This is a majority vote, and at 83, yes and 2 against, the motion under Article 45 passes. Article 46.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56, whereby the Board of Assessors may grant real and personal property tax abatements up to 100% of the total tax assessed to members of the Massachusetts National Guard and to reservists on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal year they perform such service, subject to eligibility to be established by the Board of Assessors to be effective beginning in the fiscal year 2021. The authority to grant abatements under this section shall expire after two years of acceptance, unless extended by a vote of the town.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Yes.
Kristin Fox, Principal Assessor.
Our, one of our, our town assessor.
Yep, I just wanted to give a brief overview of this. So Clause 56...
A little louder, please.
Clause 56 is a local option personal exemption. The last time Stowe accepted this was in May 2011, and it was valid for fiscals years 12 and 13. Simply wasn't brought back until now due to lack of interest. We have had some interest in it recently, which is why I am here. Obviously, it allows the Board of Assessors to grant abatements to National Guard and reservists on active duty, depending on eligibility requirements. It would be modeled similarly to our other veterans exemptions, where taxpayer has to own the property as of July 1 of the fiscal year. There's a two-year Town-Stowe residency requirement for this exemption, and also, any abatement granted would be prorated on a monthly basis by fiscal year. I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Are there any questions or other debate?
No debate outside.
Then, seeing none, we can go open for voting. And at 79 to 5, I will declare Article 40, the motion under Article 46 to have passed. Article 47.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 as an additional appropriation to the fiscal 12, to fiscal year 2019, Department of Unemployment Assistance Account.
This is $10,000 more than what's in the warrant. Finance Committee, do we have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The State Department of Unemployment rules are such that the town is liable for unemployment for, for employees, even after they leave the town's employ. Evidently, a former employee or a number of employees have been separated from their job, and these funds will be allocated to cover the liability, the town's liability. Passage of this article does increase expenditures.
Is there any questions or other debate on Article 47?
Mr. Moderator, we do have discussion outside.
Steve Jelenek, 88 PBD Drive. Could somebody explain the discrepancy between what's in the warrant and what was moved?
Mr. Wrigley will answer that.
I made that adjustment based on the fact that, when it was first submitted to me from the Treasurer Collector's Office to the current moment, we've continued to incur obligations under the guidelines established by DUA. And this additional ten thousand, we'll cover that, together with a little buffer, because I'm expecting additional requests for unemployment. And though we do take the opportunity to challenge some of these, our rate of success is rather low, and so I'm trying to pivot a little bit.
Thank you. Any other questions or debate?
No other debate outside.
Then we can open for a vote. And this will be a majority vote. And we can start fifteen-second countdown. And we're at five seconds. And the final vote is seventy-eight to nine, and the motion passes under Article forty-seven. Article forty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand dollars to be added to any balance remaining and previously appropriated for tax title proceedings for tax-taking and land court foreclosure, including costs and legal expenses related thereto, to be expended by the Treasurer Collector.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the FinCon met this morning and recommend approval of this article.
I didn't quite catch that.
We recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any questions or debate?
No debate outside.
Then we'll open for voting. Voting is open, and fifteen seconds. And by a vote of seventy-nine to three, the motion passes under Article forty-eight. Article forty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of three thousand five hundred dollars as an additional appropriation to the fiscal year 2019, general obligation bond issuance fee.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Is there any questions or debate?
No debate outside.
Then we will open for voting. Now, I should point out, because this is a bill from a prior year, this will require a four-fifths vote, which is pretty unusual at a town meeting. If this was a special town meeting, it would require a nine-tenths vote. And by a vote of eighty-one to six, I will declare the motion under Article forty-nine to pass. Article fifty.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of one thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars to be expended under the direction of the Chief of Police for the purpose of paying misclassification of a starting pay step per this police contract in fiscal year 2019.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Passage of this article does increase expenditures.
Is there any questions or debate on this article?
No debate outside.
Thank you. We can open voting. This will be a majority vote. Even though it's a misclassification from a prior year, it is not, and bill not completely paid from a prior year. It's a little bit different. And five more seconds. And the final vote is eighty-two to six, so the motion passes under Article fifty. Article fifty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars representing a portion of the net premium paid to the town upon the sale of the town's two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2019 bonds dated September twenty-seven, 2019, to pay a thirty-one thousand portion, thirty-one thousand dollar portion of the cost of the fire pumper truck authorized by a vote of the town passed May fourteen, 2019, Article thirty-five, a forty-three thousand dollar portion of the cost of the town building HVAC project authorized by a vote of the town passed May fourteen, 2019, Article thirty-six, and a fifty-one thousand dollar portion of the cost of the Lower Village roadway project authorized by a vote of the town passed June twenty-four, 2019, Article thirty-four, and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such projects by a like amount.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval. It's incorrectly written in here that this article will increase expenditures. It actually will be applied to pay down other bonds, so it is budget neutral.
Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on this article? It's a little complicated.
No debate outside.
Then we will open for voting on Article fifty-one. And by a vote of seventy-nine to three, the motion passes. I wasn't a hundred percent sure whether I should call this at majority or two-thirds. I can call it clearly in excess of two-thirds, and the motion passes. Article fifty-two. Pardon?
That's printed in the warrant.
If you want, yep.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article fifty-two as printed in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval. We believe it will increase expenditures.
And the selectmen had a recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the selectmen unanimously recommend approval of this article.
Is there any questions or debate on Article fifty-two, or the motion?
No debate outside.
Okay, I think we can open for voting. And this will require a majority at seventy-three to sixteen. Clearly, the motion passes. Article fifty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article fifty-three as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Yes, over here.
Financial, nineteen Haley Brook Road, Community Preservation Committee. I just wanted to point out that we have included a sheet showing summary of CPA available funds and the articles, CPA-related articles here, including this Article fifty-three rescinding this program, which never got off the ground. It ran into a number of issues, including the state saying that the deed restrictions wouldn't count towards our ten percent safe harbor affordable housing number, and also having issues finding the correct administrator of the project. So after sixteen years, we are having this rescinded, and the money can be put back in the pot for other affordable housing projects.
Is there any questions or debate on Article, the motion under Article fifty-three?
No debate outside.
Then we can open for voting, and thank you for that update from the CPC. And five seconds, three, actually. And this will be a majority, require a majority vote. At eighty-one to three, the motion passes. Article fifty-four, Red Acre Design Funds.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article fifty-four as printed in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have a recommendation from Capital Planning?
Why, yes, we do, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning recommends approval of this article.
And do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval. We don't know if this will increase expenditures.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, usually we ask for the recommendation first, I mean, for the, any presentations first. I believe there is a short presentation on Article fifty-four.
There is no presentation? Oh, we do have one. Never mind.
Mr. Moderator, this is Mike Kupchinsky, twelve Canterbury Road, and Chairman of the Stowe Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. There is a little, there was a little confusion about why we're asking for these funds, so I wanted to just make it clear. So there's a couple of, a couple of slides in the packet. I just wanted to remind folks that, two years ago, the trust bought this property, and in the land last year, spent a fair amount of money, fifty thousand dollars, for the demolition of the structures that were there, and then also another eleven thousand dollars for the pre-engineering study. So the things going forward for this year and next year will be to reach out to the community and get input about how this property should be handled in terms of development, or if it should, but hopefully it will be. And also, then, we would move forward to some sort of, looking for a developer to be able to be our partner for this. Why are these funds needed now? It's because, first of all, this is the first project that the trust will be attempting at this scale. We've had very small-scale projects in the past, and it's very important that the design concepts that are going to be used to reach out to the public for their input are not conceptual, that are based on the actual constraints of this property. And if we, and if we make sure that we have, these options are realistic, that we will avoid delays in costs in the future. We also, in the past, for Chapter sixty-one projects, we've had our housing consultant do some sort of conceptual drawings, but in this case, because of the scale of this, we'd like to make it clear that the housing consultant will be just a technical resource to the, and not be the creative resource that will be putting together kind of the conceptual drawings. This will, money will also cover, besides the site examination and these conceptual alternatives, the different options that would be needed for zoning and going forward to actually complete a project. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've had recommendations. Are there any debate or questions on Article fifty-four? Yeah, Article fifty-four.
No debate outside.
Thank you. Seeing none, we can open voting. Three seconds. And by a vote of seventy-seven to eight, the motion passes under Article fifty-four. Article fifty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article fifty-five as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The passage of this article does not increase expenditures.
Is there any questions or debate on Article fifty-five?
No debate outside.
Then we can open for voting. This will require a majority vote. And, thank you. Ten seconds left. And the final vote is seventy-seven to two, the motion passes. Article fifty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article fifty-six as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee. Actually, I'm going to take Capital Planning first.
Mr. Moderator, Stowe has been struggling for nearly twenty years to secure access to this former railroad right-of-way and to address the many challenges associated with improving it, to enable more efficient use by pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars. Nevertheless, track road is one of the key remaining uncompleted sections of the Assabette River Rail Trail, which runs from Marlborough to South Acton Train Station. Accordingly, Capital Planning voted unanimously to recommend the town support the use of CPA funds to secure the services of an expert, to undertake a comprehensive study of the available options.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee concurs with the Capital Planning Committee in recommending this article for approval. It's notable that this money is pre-tax through the CPA, and passage of this article does not increase this year's expenditures.
Thank you. Are there any questions or debate on the motion on Article fifty-six?
No debate outside.
Thank you.
Women, I, sorry, sorry. There is one debate.
Thank you. We're ready.
Alan Fierce, three eighty, for Reddiger Road. Putting on my bike rider hat rather than my Oars hat, I'm here to support this article, although I could be here on behalf of Oars, because what we're hoping to do with this study is create a usable path along a very beautiful stretch of river that I think could be a tremendous asset for the town of Stowe. Right now, very few people use it. You have to travel very slowly on your bike. My wife fell in the soft gravel that's there. It needs to be improved, but this could tremendously improve access to the river by all kinds of people, not just bike riders. So I hope the town will support this article.
There is no other debate outside.
Thank you. Is there any questions or debate inside? Seeing none, we will open for voting. And five seconds. And by a vote of seventy-five to thirteen, the motion under Article And by a vote of 75 to 13, the motion under Article 56 passes. Article 57.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 57 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Article 57. Do we have a recommendation from Capital Planning?
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning understands that playground equipment was always part of the vision for the community center park, but funding for such equipment was not included in the FY 2018 Warren Article authorizing park construction. We view efforts to promote outdoor recreation for all ages, but particularly for our youngest residents, as important in terms of strengthening our community. Accordingly, we see this expenditure as an entirely appropriate use of Community Preservation Act funds, and voted unanimously to recommend that the town support it.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee wholeheartedly concurs with the Capital Planning Committee as it recommends for approval of this article. Note that the funding for this article comes out of the Community Preservation Act funds, and therefore does not impact this year's expenditures.
Thank you. Is there any questions or debate on the motion under Article 57?
No debate outside.
Thank you. Then we'll open for voting. Again, this will be a majority vote. And 15 seconds. Five seconds. And I'd like to remind everyone, as you go out, please return your voting clickers. And by a vote of 72 yes to 15 no, the motion passes. Article 58.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 58 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Capital Planning.
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning voted to approve this article. The Town Hall is one of three historic buildings in town. These funds will provide design documents that will allow the town to bid the work subject to further approval of, by a future town meeting. The preliminary cost estimates are high. The committee hopes that more detailed design study will include consideration of lower cost options.
And Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval and concurs with the Capital Planning Committee's rationale.
Thank you. I believe we had a short presentation.
Yes. Andy Crosby, 7 Edge Hill Road. I'm a Historical Commission member for the Town Hall Restoration Committee. The Town Hall Restoration Committee is requesting town meeting to approve an additional $200,000 from the CPA fund to finish the Town Hall Restoration design. The additional funds are required to finish the design phase with a ready-for-construction design and a validated construction budget, as well as to pay for higher-than-expected costs for the construction drawings. The 2018 town meeting approved $175,000 of CPA funds for the Town Hall Restoration design project. After the town meeting, the Selectmen established a Town Hall Restoration Committee with representatives of the, from the Board of Selectmen, the Building Department, Historical Commission, CPC, Capital Planning, Finance Committee, and a member of the community. In 2018, the committee hired an architectural firm, CBI, for the first portion of the design work. The first step in the project was to assess the Town Hall's current conditions. Some of the findings of the study include a sagging back wall, which must be repaired but is not in immediate danger of collapse, sagging stone retaining walls, windows which are in poor to fair condition, rot, water damage, lead paint, asbestos, and PVCs throughout the building. Additionally, the building needs to be insulated and does not meet current building codes and ADA regulations. When the current conditions report was completed, CBI worked with the committee to define the potential uses for the building based on input received during a public forum, and created an initial design for the restored Town Hall. This design fixes the sagging back wall, eliminates the dampness in the basement, removes hazardous materials, repairs the windows, walls, doors, and other features, and updates heating and adds AC. The design also adds an elevator, a kitchenette, accessible bathrooms on the main floor, as well as additional storage space and an area of historical displays. The design for the basement includes a meeting space and office for the Historical Commission in the basement. Excuse me. The plan also includes updating Town Hall to current building codes and ADA requirements as needed. Based on this preliminary design, CBI developed an estimated construction budget totaling just under $3.5 million. The submission of this report and the preliminary budget, CBI completed all its tasks, and the Town Hall Restoration Committee is now interviewing design firms for the final portion of the design project, which includes reviewing and finalizing the design to ensure the design is cost-effective and that the Town Hall will meet present and future needs of the residents of Stowe. Developing a final construction budget based on that design and creating the construction drawings required to go out for bidding. During this process, the committee will look for input from Stowe residents on what should be included in the restoration design. At the completion of the design phase, the committee will present the final design to the town and return to town meeting for funding for the construction phase. Based on the remaining work required to get us to construction, the cost to finish the design is estimated to be around $240,000. The committee has approximately $95,000 remaining from the original $175,000 authorized for this project. The committee is requesting approval for the $200,000, which with the remaining funds will allow us to finish the Town Hall Restoration design with a $55,000 contingency fund. Once the design project is completed, any unused funds will be returned to the CPC. Thank you very much for your support, and we look forward to answering your questions.
We have a couple folks inside who wish to speak. Do we have anyone outside?
Yes, we do.
All right, we'll do, one gentleman in here first, oh, we'll do a lady in here first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Debbie Woods, Great Road. My basic question is, how do you proceed with a design when you're not sure what the goal or the outcome is? My question is whether or not the Town Building Committee has made the determination of whether it is truly a restoration, or whether it is a creation of new space above and beyond what the Town Hall was initially built for, as well as currently used. So my question is, how do you do a design if a basic question of, is it renovation, or an ad-reno has not been determined?
Can you answer that?
I've got the same problem. Warren Nelson, Boxborough Road. About four years ago, we started this process, and we sat down and we went over the building with a bunch of the people from the town, saw the depletion of the building, the back wall was down, water was running in, and at that time, there was a vote going on, and we all said, no, we don't want to spend the money on it. Over the last couple of years, I've noticed that there was renovation being done on the building, and I don't remember ever voting for it. At the same time, there was other buildings in the town that were going to be taken down. The white building down at the cemetery is still standing up. The old fire station was not going to be used, and that's now being used again. So my question is, is why is the town that, it's always hurting for money, have these buildings that are standing there, or buildings that should be sold, or buildings that should not be renovated? Thank you.
Thank you. You have a couple of questions. Can you respond? And then I'm going to take a question outs, or outside.
The project as contemplated right now by the committee is a restoration. The project as the committee is looking at it right now is a restoration. You know, we are intending to, you know, part of the process that's coming up is trying to define future uses, but we are not looking at drastically changing the building or using it for other purposes than what it has been, which is a community center, and a place where people can have meetings and activities. And I'm not sure I can talk about potential sales of the building or anything like that. That's not really our purview.
Thank you. Could we, do you have, how many people, folks do you have outside?
We have one person.
You have how many?
One.
One? Why don't we take an outside speaker?
Ellen Sturgis, 12 Canterbury Road, speaking as individual, as the Selectmen did not take a position on this. I agree with the previous two comments, particularly, I think, to not have a clear purpose of this. First, I'll say, this building is iconic to Stowe, and it has to stay up in some form, and I totally understand the shape that it's in, and that, that work needs to be done on it. However, I, when you're moving to design, you usually have a very clear purpose in mind. We did this with a school project. We had lots and lots and lots of meetings with community members to discuss what we wanted, and more particularly, what we did not want. I think it's, it's too soon to be passing design funds until we have an explicit purpose. As the previous speaker, we've had multiple buildings in town we thought we weren't going to use, but now they're still up, and then we start spending money to fix them. I think we have to be really clear. Do we need an elevator, for example? Do we need to use the basement? There's a whole lot of issues in that basement. Maybe we have to use it to shore it up, but do we need to actually use it as an accessible space? We have the Pompo Center now that we didn't have before. I think it's premature to approve these funds until the committee takes action more on getting community input and, and brings forth a very specific recommendation of how the Old Town Hall will fit into the larger picture of municipal buildings in Stowe.
Very good.
Thank you. We'll take the stranger over here.
Linda Hathaway, 76 Crescent Street. I'm in support of this project. The Town Hall needs to be refurbished, and the, the work needs to be done in the sense of, to keep the building standing. The wall, interior, and windows, and all the things that this committee has been working on and looked at. That building, I, for 10 years, scheduled activities in that building, and just to run those activities for that, we could use that building more often, for the dance groups, for the, the children's programs. We are in need of space. And even if the lower level was to be reconstructed, the Historical Commission has art, has, yeah, I lost the brain here, has artifacts that could be stored down there and be used. We don't have enough space. Right now, they're over in the, they have a cubicle in the town building, and in order to be able to use the different spaces in this, the elevator is needed to be ADA compliant. And so I, this committee has worked hard on this project for a long time. There was a building use committee before that, you know, that had gone in and, and had taken surveys that this building was needed. So I am in support of this article, and I hope those that are here remaining would support this group.
Thank you. I'm going to take a voter outside now.
Ed DeLuca, 26 Crescent Street. I would, I'm on the Capital Planning Committee, but also on the Renovation Committee. I think it's important to emphasize that the funding for this is intended to come primarily from CPA historical bucket. So this is not a recreation effort. This is a historical building restoration. That is the focus. That is what we concentrate on. And this building, no one, I believe, is going to articulate that this building should not exist in town. Right? There are other buildings that the town owns that we may wish to pull down, but I don't, I've not heard anybody in town say that this is one of those. So it's different. And maintaining this building is, is the intent of this project. The cost is high, and we recognize that the cost is high, and that is why we did not proceed with the $3.5 million, bring it, bring that to town. So we understand that the cost is high.
Thank you. I'll take a voter who's waiting here, and I think we have another person outside waiting.
Courtney Frecha, 203 Boxborough Road. I'm also on this committee, but as an individual, I'll say that I am a person who is in the intersection of several groups that have used this building over the years, and the events that happen in the building are of a community nature, which I, I don't think can be replaced elsewhere in town. And there's a, there's a quality to having a building that's an historic space to be in, which is part of the character of our town. It's part of being in this somewhat rural place, and we've got this lovely hall, and so maintaining the use of that is important in and of itself. Also, I believe that however, that, that this building will always be used, that there is no question in my mind that we'll continue to have meeting overflow there, that dance groups will use it if they can, that perhaps there'll still be a potluck supper for the Conservation Trust there, and uses that are perhaps too numerous to name, and, and as our community grows and fills out our, our community center at Pompo, the Town Hall will continue to be important as an adjunct or an alternative space, or as, in its own right.
Thank you. We have a voter outside waiting that we'll take next.
Hi, my name is Achille Forumson. I live on 249 Boxborough Road. Speaking here as an individual, but for full disclosure, I'm both a member of the Finance Committee and of the Town Hall Renovation Committee. Couple of points I want to address being raised here. First, we have, as a renovation committee, actually received input from the community on what we are looking for with regard to the Town Hall. In general, the, the feedback we received has been aligned to what the work that has been ongoing with, within that renovation committee. So I think we actually have a focus for what the path forward is. Second, in restoring the Town Hall, it's actually not the interior that's going to bring the, the majority of the cost. It's the structural issues that are both existing in the basement, as well as in the outer walls of the building, that, that bring the majority of the cost forward. Second point on this is, historic buildings in Stowe, there are a few, but this is probably the one, the most important one with regard to the town of Stowe. We have CPA fundings for three different buckets. It's historical, it's recreation, and open land space, and the third is affordable housing. If you look at usage of CPA fundings from the inception of this category and the taxation of Stowe, it's in principle been the minority of funds used for historical preservation in the town of Stowe since, for the last 20 years. So it's, it's, it's time to actually look at our historic assets and apply the funds that we already pre-taxed ourselves to do that in the restoration of this beautiful building. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here, this young man.
Tom Ryan, member of the Board of Selectmen, but speaking as an individual, as well as a member of the Town Hall Restoration Committee. My major goal in being involved in this is essentially to save the, save the Old Town Hall. While we end up talking a little bit about, you know, design and so on, part of that is to bring it up to meet current building codes, ADA compliance, things like that. The current intent is not to completely reconfigure the building. What we have is, we have a historic Old Town Hall with a big meeting space, and the idea is to restore it. That takes, and to restore it, we need to do windows, doors, insulation, heating system, all of that stuff has to be specked out and designed. So that's, that's where a lot of it comes in, as well as a lot of the items that Adley said. So we're not going to cut up the main hall, and the only thing that may be in question really, as far as design of space, is what are we going to do with the lower level? So it's, how it's going to be used, it needs to be saved before anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here. Yes, sir.
Andy Crosby, 7th Edge Hill Road. I just want to follow up on my comments, and just want to make it clear that everyone understands that we will have additional public forums, and we more than welcome everyone here to be there and help us make these decisions so that we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a person outside now.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, the, it has been suggested that we call the question.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
It was recommended that we call the question.
Oh, we have someone that asked to end debate and go to a vote. Is there a second for that?
Yes, several.
All right. This is not a debatable motion. We will open for a vote. You're voting on whether we should immediately stop debate and immediately go to an actual vote on the, on the article. And the voting is open. And I'll give it 15 seconds. And three seconds, two, one. By a vote of 88 to four, debate is ended. And now we will proceed to a vote on the actual motion for design funds for town hall renovation. And we can open that vote now. And we'll give you another 15 seconds on that one. And by a vote of 68 to 20, the motion under Article 58 passes. Article 59.
Read the whole thing, right?
I don't know that we need to. Is there any change? I didn't think there was any change.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 59 as printed in the warrant.
I believe we have a short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I make it as short as I can. Thank you. This is Mike Opchinsky, 12 Canterbury Road, and chairman of the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. As I don't think is any news that there's been a large economic impact of the coronavirus pandemic across the Commonwealth, across the country, across the world, but particularly here in Stowe. We've had a number of folks, we've had over 300 unemployment claims that have come up, that are directly related to COVID-19. And it's become clear that there are folks in town who need some support for short term to make their, to, to continue to be able to pay their rent and to, to try to get back into full employment and, and move forward with their lives. So the Community Preservation Committee approached us because of, it became clear that there was a, the, the use of CPA funds for rental assistance was something that was, after the original act was passed in 2012, it was amended so that, that this is a allowable use. After looking, there's a lot of information in the packet, and there's a lot of background that you can read if, to understand kind of how this came about. But essentially, we were, we were trying to put together a emergency program. That's a 90-day emergency program. And it's, and it's now going to be, when we first started talking about this, it was in the middle of the, the town meeting would have been in the middle of this period, but now we're, this is all in retrospect. The funding will come from the Community Preservation Committee. It's obviously funding, the funding is contingent on approval here today. We'll also try to do some private fundraising to raise funds to defray the administration costs, which is not going to be high. It's going to be under $10,000. The administration would be to, would be done by a third party because of the confidential nature of the information. There's, are going to be applied only to rents now in retrospect from April to June. And as soon as the program can be, as people can apply and be processed, the payments would be made as soon as possible after that. And these payments are made directly to the landlords after confirmation of all the commitments by the, by the, by all parties. For eligibility, this is going to be for current Stowe residents whose income has been lost or reduced by COVID-19. The, this, the post-CV-19 income will need to be less than 80% of the area, region, area median income, which varies depending on household size, but is the, the same criteria we would use for affordable housing in town for ownership or other type. Any other aid, federal aid, unemployment insurance, all that stuff will be included in the total household income, and that will need to meet that 80% of AMI. There, I'd like to point out that there, for normally for rental, affordable rentals, there is no asset limit in the state or federal, and it's important, we decided that for this program, we wanted to make sure that we, I personally think that that's an oversight in the, in the rules. So we wanted to make sure that there was some sort of asset test here. And so we've arrived at a $50,000 asset test. We are assured that, that's probably not going to have, there's, that's not going to eliminate anybody who really needs help. The, the assistance provider will be capped at, at the 70% of the max affordable rent, which is approximately 100, $1,100 per month. And a unique feature of our program as opposed to other towns is that we've been able, because most of our affordable, affordable rental tenants are with one landlord, we've been able to negotiate that the landlord will match the, the contribution of the tenants. So the, this fund will pay for that three-month period 70% of the total, of the total rent due. And the tenant will pay 15%, and the landlord will forgive 15%. This is, there's, I don't believe there's any other program in this, in the Commonwealth that has gotten the cooperation of the landlord to that extent. So there's, there's plenty of other information that you can read, but the, in summary there, it's that there's, this is a temporary emergency program to support our neighbors in need. It's for rental assistance only. Utilities, for instance, are not included. It's only for current Stowe residents whose income is below 80% of the AMI for that household size. The period is in retrospect now for April through June. And if people were able to pull together and pay their rent, the landlord has agreed to credit future rents. This, this payment will be for April to June, and those payments will go toward future rents. Any unused funds that will, would be returned to CPA control. So we'll, once we disperse what our funds are necessary, after we see how many people apply and what all happens, that the, the request in the, in the warrant is for $300,000, but we think it's going to be significantly less than $200,000. But we will not know until after people apply. And just as a last thing, this is not a really a housing program. This is a people program. There, we, we try to keep these funds available for long-term solutions to affordable housing. So that means that either creation or preservation of units that are already on our subsidized housing inventory, and that we'd like to preserve funds for those. But this is a way to use these funds to help our neighbors who keep a roof under their heads temporarily while they reassess their lives and try to get their feet under them. Thank you.
Thank you. We will take a recommendation from the finance committee at this point.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article. Passage of this article does not increase expenditures as mentioned by the speaker.
Thank you. I believe the selectmen have a recommendation on this article.
Mr. Moderator, the selectmen voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you. Is there any questions or other debate on the motion under Article 59?
No debate outside.
Okay, well, we can start voting. And the final vote is passed by 77 to six. It required a majority vote. Before we go on to Article 60, I'm going to hijack the meeting for 30 seconds and ask everyone to vote one more time. Do you, do you like having the electronic voting? Do you think this is a good, a good thing for the town? So yes, if you like it, no, if you think it's, it's a problem or, or we need to investigate it. So I'm going to open voting on that. Did you enjoy using electronic voting today?
Yeah.
In 15 seconds. And thank you. Please send your comments either to, if you have any comments on making it better, to either the clerk's office or the selectman, or, not the selectman's office, the moderator. We both have mailboxes. And three seconds, two, one. By 78 to eight, people seem to enjoy electronic voting. If the eight people wish, please let us know what, what, what you didn't like about electronic voting. And now we'll take a motion on Article 60.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to bar the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of hiring a licensed site professional to provide environmental due diligence, Massachusetts contingency plan, and other LSP-related services necessary to address the release of per- and polyfluoralkyl, fluoralkyl substances, PFAS, that have been detected in several public and private supply wells, water supply wells in Stowe, including any relevant professional and administrative support services.
A motion and a second. Do we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article, although this article does not appear as part of the budget. This year, next year, if we pass it, it will be a part of our debt service.
Thank you. And I believe the selectmen have a recommendation.
The selectmen voted unanimously to support this article. It was unfortunately quite necessary.
And are there any questions or other debate on the motion under Article 60?
Yes, there is debate outside.
There's no one inside, so I'll let you take, take over.
Hi, it's Alan Fierce again, 214 Ready Road. I actually am the former executive director of the LSP board, know quite a bit about licensed site professionals. First of all, I want to make sure that the LSP that's being hired is a hydrogeologist. Many of you may not know that they come in all kinds of shapes with various backgrounds and educations, but what we need here is a hydrogeologist. So I'm tempted to make that an amendment, but I'm going to just trust that the people doing the hiring will know what the right thing to do here is. You do not want a civil engineer, even an environmental engineer. Of course, this is just opening the door to what could be a tremendous obligation that the town is incurring. I'm very worried about this. I don't know what the selectmen or the administrator have done by way of thinking in advance about those future costs and whether you have any ballpark on what those might be. So that would be my question.
Mr. Wrigley, I believe, can answer that.
We've put some plug numbers together with respect to potential total project costs, to use that term. Obviously, these are benchmarks based on those who have gone through this process before, and with the aid of DEP, as well as a current LSP firm that we have employed by the town for other purposes. It was related to our elevator failure and hydraulic leaks. And I'll use just a million dollars plus or minus over the five or six phases that are essentially outlined and delineated under the 21E program. With respect to getting the LSP, Craig Martin, through the facility management and our building inspector and jack-of-all-trades, underway with a procurement process that at this moment has resulted in 11 proposals. Basically, the evaluative process will focus first on the qualities and experience, applicable experience. And hydrogeology obviously is an aspect of a full-range consulting firm that would provide hydrogeology as an aspect of it. We have been communicating on a regular basis with the, with Mary Jude Pigsley, who basically is the director of the Worcester Office of DEP on this. And we are expecting to receive in the near future a document called, a form that basically assigns us responsibility. It's a notice of responsibility. It hasn't arrived yet. DEP has been helping us considerably with respect to initial water analysis at their expense. So identifying and defining the limits of the contamination is still ongoing, but hopeful will be completed again in the near future. We then received a notice of responsibility. We will have positioned ourselves by at that point deciding on who the LSP will be, and then we'll get started. This process also ensues over the course of multiple years. What we didn't want to do is to attempt to appropriate the larger sum of money before the scope of services from start to finish could be incrementally assessed, completed, and then go to the next phase. And DEP will accept that approach, management approach. And so I think we're well-positioned to do the right things at the right time, but not to go out too far in front of this process. Important to note as well that we've been consulting with KP Law, which is, which represents us as counsel. They're a full-range, largest municipal law firm in Massachusetts. They have a full range of legal expertise because there are some legal matters that will be faced and addressed by the town as we go forward. That's where we are at the moment. This gets us started. It does no more than that. And we'll be back, or someone will be back to visit you again on this.
We have a follow-up question?
Well, just a quick comment. I, I think the estimate of a million dollars is probably going to be very low. For the initial stages, perhaps, but depending on what kind of, well, first, the immediate response action, if that's required in the notice of intent. But then the long-term fix is likely to be perhaps even an order of magnitude higher than that. So I just think the town needs to begin to think more broadly about potential large costs here.
Mr. Moderator, we have no additional debate.
From 107 Kingland, and I think Mr. Wrigley may have answered this, but the, the expenditure here would get us to a plan, we would have studied and understand a plan, or is this include actual remed, start remediation or something to that effect?
It won't include remediation.
Okay.
This is really the immediate response.
Study.
Setting the stage, identifying and defining the nature and extent of the problem. And this will involve water analysis, continued water analysis, expansion of existing assessment of the environmental issues.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions or debate outside?
No other, no other debate outside.
Thank you. We have one person waiting here.
Don McFarland, Boxboro Road. Have we been doing anything, Mr. Wrigley?
A little, little louder.
Have we been doing any questioning with the fire academy over towards Lake Boonside?
Mr. Wrigley.
Because they've been doing a lot of this type of chemical use in the past. I was curious about that. And also the Stowe Airport, I think they've done some foam down of planes up there. I don't know how any of these playing with additional funding from state people, perhaps.
I, I didn't hear the second part of it. The first part of it is, we've been engaged with the fire academy, both directly and formally and informally, because as you've just mentioned, they're further ahead in this process than we are. we are. And it's helpful to speak to those who'll be going through the process. If it's similar, if it's a similar situation as ours is, where they've established to some degree responsibility, but the nature and extent of the cleanup, when you, needs to be scoped, so we don't know that part of it. But we've learned a lot from just chatting with them. In fact, a few of us attended at the Fire Academy a few months ago with DEP present, with the Fire Academy's LSP present, with local elected officials present, because this is a much larger issue. It's statewide. It's worldwide, but for our purposes, when it comes to grant monies and such, you know, DEP understands the nature and extent of the problem. They're discussing the prospects of providing government funds to help communities. And some of what they have available, they're already helping us to offset the cost of the water analysis and finding the limits of the contamination and that such. I didn't hear what it was that you said beyond that. All right. We have, we haven't dealt directly with them on that. Part of this process will involve, once we get the LSP on board, from my perspective and experience, they have the technical expertise to be, to do most of the talking to others, my own personal opinion. Not an expert on it. Worked for an engineering company at one time. We did a lot of, we had LSPs and did some of that work decades ago. But it's, for me, it's really the task of letting those who are educated and trained and familiar with working knowledge of this process, particularly because there are missteps that you can avoid. There's also things you want to know from people who have gone through it and are ahead of you on it.
So that second half, in case it wasn't clear for folks outside, was a question about whether the airport also had an issue. Are there any other questions or debate?
No debate outside.
Under Article 60. Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. So voting is open. And 15 seconds. We're at about five seconds. And by a vote of 74 yes to 3 no, the motion passes. Before we take the next motion, I'm going to take just a couple of seconds again and thank everyone for putting up with this very unusual town meeting in two parts, all spread out, and I really appreciate the folks that came. And I'd say, the reason I kept walking around in front, one of the many things that we missed, and you saw some of the, oh, you saw some of the, some bits of confusion that happens. One of them is, at least for me, over in a corner, I actually didn't have any speakers pointed at me, and I had a hard time hearing anything. So if you had a hard time hearing, I sympathize. But anyways, thank you again, all of the voters that came. This meeting is about you, so I'll take another motion, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, I move that this meeting be dissolved.
Second.
We have a motion to dissolve. Everyone, use your clickers one last time. And 15 seconds left. And a reminder, once again, please return the clickers. These are not the Town of Stowe's yet. We have, ours are still on order.